Okay. So I'll begin with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is on ceded Mi'kmaq territory, called Order, and I just want to make a quick announcement about our 150th Prince Edward Island's 150th, 150th anniversary exhibit that's down at Beaconsfield, gives the history of Prince Edward Island entering Confederation as the seventh province, and the exhibit is very diverse, reflects the island, like it shows our First Nations, our people of color, our Lebanese community, it covers all aspects of the community, so it's a very good presentation, so if you get a moment, drop by, it's right on the lawns of Beaconsfield, which is on Kent Street. Okay, any declarations of conflict of interest, Counselor Duran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, I have a conflict on the Parks and Rec Resolution Number Two, so I'll have to excuse myself.
Okay. Any others? Okay, approval of agenda. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor McKinnon, all those in favor? Okay. So we have previous draft minutes, regular monthly meeting, June 12, 2023, special meeting June 26, which is the fourth Monday of the month, 2023, just give you a minute or so to peruse. I just want to thank Tracy McLean, the digital format is working out very well for the minutes, and the reports, thank you. So someone to move the minutes, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by the Deputy Mayor Yankoff, all those in favor, just raise your hand, okay? Business arising, out of the minutes. Any business arising? Okay, so the first report, Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, Chair of the Standing Committee of Planning, Heritage and Development.
Thank you, your worship. Okay. So, Planning and Heritage Committee met on July the 4th, the Planning Board met on July the 4th, our Heritage Board met on June 14th and July 5th, the Design Review Board met on June 19th, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we did not meet in June, we have four resolutions for your consideration, and the minutes from all of those minutes, meetings that I listed are in your package, and if anyone has any questions, I'll do my best to answer, thank you.
Any questions on the... Tracy, I don't have the names coming up, are they automatically going to you?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Seat seven, so seat seven must be Counselor Twill. Go ahead.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor, Alana, thank you for your report, my question is not so much for you, it's more to senior administration, but I'll ask it through you. When you take into consideration with the retirement of Alex Forbes as a manager of planning, I understand, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that our CAO would be fulfilling that responsibility as the acting manager of the department, and furthermore, to help fill that void in terms of administrating applications, looking at applications, issuing permits, having preliminary discussions with developers, a firm was hired outside, outside of the province to, to help fill that void as well, so with that in mind, and again, my question's not for you, because you're not involved with the operations of, of, of the department, but I'll ask it through you because you're the chair, so my question is, is it business as usual where developers realistically can expect a return phone call within a, you know, a reasonable amount of time? I, I've been involved with a couple of issues, and I was even challenged by a staff person that said, I, I should know, well, I'm not sure what I should know, I'm paraphrasing, I'm not sure what I should know, but my question is, are, or is there an expectation within a reasonable amount of time where developers can receive a phone call, we, we received your application, maybe at such, such, such a time, we could sit down and, and go over your application and, and outline what the, what the terms and conditions are, what the prerequisites are, here's what the zoning and development bylaw states, whether it's as of right, it's not as of right, whether they meet setbacks, side yard setbacks, whatever the case may be, because this seems to be reoccurring, and then for some reason, the owner seems to be backing the elected officials, said, we should know, I thought we had a transition plan in place, and I was under the impression that, that, that would fill the void with the CAO as the acting manager, and this firm that was hired off-island, and that's not, that's not the feedback I'm getting from the community, so, again, I know you're not involved with the operations, but I, I wanted to ask the question.
So, could I just ask the deputy to answer, and then she can defer, deputy? Okay, hold on, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Twill, for your question, and I will defer this to CAO Mohammed, but I will just, I will just say that, yes, the Planning and Heritage Department is in what we call a triage mode, and the top priority right now is getting permits out the door, and I know that there has been a restructuring plan approved by council, and other than that, in terms of the operational piece, I'll turn that over to CAO Mohammed to address, thank you.
Okay, CAO Eleanor.
Thank you, your worship, and through to Counselor Twill. To be clear, so I, I cannot be a total acting of manager for Planning and Heritage, I, I have my role as CAO, so I've been trying to fulfill the best I can in those circumstances. There was no one on island to be able to come in and act as a manager for Planning and Heritage, so the challenge is, the firm, I'll be clear, that the consultant that we've hired, the firm is based off the island, but the consultant is located here in PEI, because you can't have a consultant at a distance working on planning things, they need to come here in person, we only have them for about two days equivalent a week, so that leaves us with three full-time staff who are trying to handle all the permits for a city of 40,000 people, so we have sent out messaging through the media to make it clear that we are not delivering at an adequate or a good service level right now, we're trying to do the best we can in terms of getting permits out, and we have been, like was mentioned, triaging, and our focus has been on development permits and seeing, and subsidies, and see what we can get out in enough time, so the reality is that my inbox is daily, filled with requests from developers and residents looking for answers on planning, I try my best to respond, I'm also working with those three individuals to get them to respond as much as they can. For me, as the Chief Administrative Officer, it's important that we maintain the mental health and resilience of staff, so they're trying the best they, they can, and the good news is that the posted positions for the two managers that resulted from the restructuring closed just last week, and we do have some viable candidates, and there'll be interviews happening next week, so hopefully this, this pain will be short-lived, and we will have resources in very soon, thank you.
Counselor Twill, this is your second time, okay?
So, so having said that, thank you for your response, Chief Administrative Officer, so again, I, I, I know the difficulties and the challenges that the department faces, the only, well, the major concerns I have is, you know, being contacted by people that are looking return, looking for permits, wanting to talk about their applications, and all there's some citing projects that there in the community that people, developers would like to pursue, but I'll ask it this way, is there, is there, can there be an expectation where they're going to be engaged, whether it's be from a preliminary perspective, or whether it's getting down to the nitty-gritty of the application, and if not, can we issue a press release and at least let the community know, because we're caught in the crossfire, and we are caught in the crossfire, like I, you know, I've been challenged by, by people that put in applications, and, and then when I try to do due diligence, I mean, I get criticized by a staff person, so, not too happy with that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to, just want to stand, please?
Oh yeah, sure, thank you, yeah, thank you, Counselor Twill, and I will defer this to CAO Mohammed.
CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
Thank you, your worship, and through to Counselor Twill, so I think it was about three weeks ago that we issued the press release that explained about the shortage of planners and that we weren't meeting service levels, so that's gone out, I apologize if a staff member has... Right, so I can look into that.
Okay, just let her finish.
And in terms of different queries, as I've said, as developers have sent in and asked for feedback on things, I've tried my best, I've been meeting with them as well, one-on-one, and then also working with staff to get them to move the applications through, as well as our consultant on some of those bigger files that we can't seem to move fast enough, some of those files have been handed to this consultant to move forward with, thank you.
Okay. Do we have some resolutions? Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Counselor Bernard?
No, I just want to make note, and we know planning shortage staff for a while, but I believe, I think we all got a copy of a survey not too long ago that showed Charlottetown was number one in getting building permits out the door the quickest from a lot of municipalities across Canada, just a note, we're going through a little bit of a rough time right now, because we don't have a planning manager, and I think that was the idea of the press release to go out, so I think patience prevails, but, you know, history has shown we've been on top of getting, getting permits out the door, so, thank you.
Okay, so we have, I believe, CAO on four resolutions, deputy? I think it's four, yep. Okay, CAO?
Thank you, worship. Is that, is that on, can you hear it?
No, we can't.
Can you hear it? It's kind of lower than normal, hey? Okay. This is from Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe, whereas the City of Charlottetown, the city is the authority having jurisdiction over land use matters within the City of Charlottetown, and whereas the city received a variance application from Deborah Dunis, the applicant, on or about March 23, 2021, which was revised by way of revised variance application on or about June 30, 2021, for a minor variance to reduce the minimum front yard setback requirement from 19.7 feet to 18 feet, and a major variance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback requirement from 24.6 feet to 15.2 feet, to permit two new single detached dwellings in the property at Viceroy Avenue, identified as PID 349035, which the applicant proposed to subdivide into two separate parcels, and whereas by decision on or about August 9, 2021, city council rejected the application, and whereas an appeal was filed by the applicant with the Island Regulatory and Appeals Commission on or about August 30, 2021, and amended on November 29, 2021, and whereas the commission, in order number LA 23-05 dated May 15, 2023, allowed the applicant's appeal and ordered the request for one minor variance to reduce the minimum front yard setback from 19.7 feet to 18 feet, and one major variance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback requirement from 24.6 feet to 15.2 feet, in order to permit two single detached dwellings on subject property, which is proposed to be subdivided into two parcels, be approved, subject to the following conditions: driveway access into the side yard east or west of each dwelling is maintained, and the driveway access is no wider than three meters at Viceroy Avenue, a privacy hedge is planted along the full extent of the south property limit to the satisfaction of the city's forestry and environmental officer prior to occupancy permit approval, and eight existing trees are retained on the property, and whereas the City of Charlottetown is now required by Section 2810 of the Planning Act to implement the commission's decision, therefore be it resolved that the result, or the request for one minor variance to reduce the minimum front yard setback requirement from 19.7 feet to 18 feet, and one major variance to reduce the minimum rear yard setback requirement to 24.6 to 15.2 feet, in order to permit two single, two new single detached dwellings on the subject property, which is proposed to be subdivided into two separate parcels, be approved, subject to the above noted conditions.
Okay, do you want to drink water?
Yeah.
Geez, hold on. So the detail of that report is in your package, I have it as page 24 in my digital form, that's the background. Question?
Question's called.
Question's called, okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those against? Okay, 10-0. Okay.
Thank you, worship, Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe, be it resolved that the request to grant the CAO permission to appoint suitably qualified design professionals as an interim independent design reviewers to review and provide comments on development project proposals, in accordance with Section 3.14 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw be approved.
Do you want to speak to it, Deputy Mayor?
Sure, yeah. This basically is just giving our CAO permission to get a, some design reviewers on a contract right away, because right now we don't have any design reviewers, so that will help these developers be able to move their projects forward, until she can go then through the proper process of establishing a new design reviewer list, like we did, you'd see it in your package, the process which we follow to do that, so this is just to get her a temporary list, to get some of these applications looked at, thank you.
So previously, back in 214, I believe, those names come to council to get approved, correct? Okay, Counselor Twill?
So, with the list, then, whoever the Chief Administrative Officer selects for a particular application, then from there, as I understand it, it goes to the Design Review Committee, right? And the recommendation, you know, I, I, it's not so much with the selections of the design reviewer, I mean, the professionals, I guess I question the process, because if we're hiring a design reviewer to come in with a professional opinion, and then, now it's got to go to a committee, it, sometimes it just boils down to differences of opinion as opposed to, you know, I mean, if we hire a professional, and let them do their job, I'm not sure, I mean, this was an added feature with the last council, prior to that, it, you know, staff reviewed the application, and for example, if it was within, within the 500 lots, then senior administration would select a professional, regardless of where they were in Canada, review the application, make their recommendations, and then the application would be approved, so I know it's not in the resolution, but I, I just wanted to bring that forward.
Deputy?
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Twill, and in terms of the Design Review Board, I, I'm not 100% sure if it falls under the Planning Act or not, but if it is something that council sees as an unnecessary step in the Planning and Heritage Department, then that's certainly something that can be taken back to committee, and a, and a report by staff can be brought back to council to see whether or not that committee is necessary anymore.
Deputy, if I look at the package, page 45 in your digital, B26, the resolution was unanimously passed, 10-0, May 12, 2014, so it wasn't the last council, it was the council of 2014, and it gives the 10 names, so those 10 names are the 10 names we're still working from, and I think we're down to now two. One, maybe, so we're just, again, to clarify, she'll get names, and then take them back to council, correct? Okay.
But just to clarify, your worship, in the short term, she, she's selecting temporary names that will just be doing the work until she brings back to council the list for us to, to approve, so there will be people that will be chosen by our CAO before we bring back the real list for the design review, new list of, of design reviewers, is that correct, CAO Mohammed?
Thank you, worship, and through to the Deputy Mayor, yes, that's correct, I would simply add, there is opportunity to reconsider some of our processes and the rules outlined when we revisit the Planning and Development, the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Which naturally will come as we review the official plan, so the next step would be zoning bylaw, and I think it's important at the time that we do work with the residents and the developers in this community to make sure we can streamline and make our processes as efficient as possible.
Plus, CAO Mohammed, the resolution from May 12, 2014, talks refers to pursuant to the requirements of Sections 31 and 34 of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, council approved the appointment of a design review, so it's, it's in our zoning and development bylaw, so if we want to knock that out, it'll have to go, it'll be part of the comprehensive review. Okay, Counselor McLeire?
Yeah, just, just on it, so, on the digital copy of 22 or 33 on this, and it, under the discussion bullets, so just to be clear, so, at best, we only have one or two design reviewers as, as we sit, and then, and the last bullet here on this discussion, it says, how many are we getting going forward, the target is to get 15 reviewers, ensure that we have enough choices, so, pretty tall task, is it?
Yeah, who are you asking the question to?
Pardon me?
Are you asking the question to the Deputy Mayor, the Chair of the Committee, or the CAO?
Yeah, sorry, Deputy Mayor, yeah.
Just one sec, Deputy.
Thank you, Counselor McLeire, yes, I suspect it will be a daunting process, and that's why you notice in the minutes that the design reviewers' fee will go up to $2,000 instead of the 2,500, instead of the 1,000 it used to be, because it's been very difficult, because it's a lot of work for a design reviewer to take on the task of looking at these projects, yeah, yep.
Okay, Counselor Twill, second question?
Yeah, just, just again, please take it under advisement, I, I have to question the process, when we do seek out professionals that's selected by senior management to give their professional opinion, and then their professional opinion, not saying it happens in all cases, but can be overruled by the committee, then the question becomes, why do we go out and retain a professional, I mean, what, what's the reason, I, I think, I, I do question the process, so please take that under advisement, and, and take it back to your committee and review that, and, and see what we can do to expedite the process, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Twill, and we'll be sure to do that, as well as when we complete the process around our new official plan, which will prompt us to make changes to our zoning and development bylaw, that will be the opportune time to make those changes to the zoning and development bylaw, if, if council so decides to do that.
Thank you. Question? Question's called? Question's called, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those against? Nothing, okay. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, worship. Planning Resolution Number One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe, be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan from medium density residential to high density residential, and amend Appendix G, zoning map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development bylaw from medium density mixed use residential zone to apartment residential zone, for the property located at Lot 160 Fairdale Drive, PID 192153, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
approved to proceed to public consultation.
Keyword is, or key two words, public consultation. Counsel Twill?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So, going to the public consultation to entertain multi-residential units, was this, previously, was this explored by, by previous council? You know, the history of this property or in this particular neighborhood? I just wanted, just wanted to ask the question.
Is that the question to the deputy mayor? Is that what you want to question?
That's, that's my first question, yeah.
Yeah, this, this has been going on for quite a while, and I think they're asking to make some changes to what their original plan was. I don't have a hundred percent of the detail on it, because really, the only thing committee decided was that it was a good opportunity to take it to public consultation. So I know in the report, you know, it kind of outlines the past, the past design and the, and the past ideas of what was going to be happening there, but if there's anything that, I don't see a planner here tonight, but if there's anything that CAO Mohammed can add to it, it's, yeah, it's, they do want to make some changes to their original plan.
Yeah. Again, it's, it's in the report, or package, page fifty-three of three hundred and thirty-three, gives all the background to set the stage for a public consultation. CAO Mohammed, you as a professional planner, can you just enlighten us? You're looking at page fifty-four.
Thank you, worship. I'm just trying to find it here, I'm...
It's, do you have the digital copy?
I do.
Yeah, go to fifty-four.
Okay, page fifty-four.
Yeah, it should be right there. Starts off as Future Land Use Map Amendment and Zoning Amendment, PID number nineteen twenty-one fifty-three, Lot one sixty Fairdale, this is in the East Royalty. Yeah, nine pages.
I don't, I can't see reference here to when it was last in front of council.
C five, C five.
Oh.
That's beauty technology. Search the word. Good.
I think I have the right page, but where's it telling you?
Right there.
The last time it went to council?
No, there's the background.
Yep, does it tell you in there when it... Thank you, worship, and through to Counselor Twill. I think this is something that I'm going to have to follow up with the department and get an answer to you, because I can't see here in the report where it refers to the last time it was in front of council.
I might be able to help with that.
I think you can, because this, there was a comprehensive review done of the East Royalty Plan, correct? And it's part of our zoning and development bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to answer?
Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, you go ahead, Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, I think, so, this, this was taken over about two years, it was part of the official plan when it was, when they're looking at East Royalty. This plan for this area was, had public consultation, the, the plan was set, and I believe now the, the owner of the land is asking for a change, that particular section. I think there was allowed to be, I think it was one twenty-four units, and I think he's asking now for six, six thirty-two, thirty-four units?
Six thirty-two.
Six thirty-two units in that, in that particular area, so that's what's going to the public consultation, so.
Yeah.
And just, your worship?
Deputy Mayor, just, I think this is the first time it's been asked. Go ahead.
Yep, and just so, you'll see in the, in the developer's request is to move from medium density mixed use residential zoning to apartment residential zoning and to amend Appendix A of the official plan map from medium density residential to high density.
Yeah.
Yep.
So this is the first time...
But for now, it's just for public consultation.
It is. Public consultation, and it'll be an opportunity for the residents, not just in East Royalty, but all over.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wonder, whenever these, whenever, whenever we have a plan that's been finalized and the, and the developers want to come and make a change or ask for a change, and it's higher density, I'm not sure there's anything that we have through the city, if we're going to have higher density, that we get more parkland space. And I wonder, do you know if there's any clause in there that allows us to get more parkland space? It's quite, it's quite an increase in the density.
Thank you, Counsel Bernard. As far as I, as far as I know, no, there isn't. There's a percentage of the overall land that is for parkland, but it's something that we can look at in our official plan and our changes to zoning and development when we do make the changes to the official plan. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, CAO Mohammed, but I, I don't think there's anything in our zoning and development bylaw that would say that you could ask and demand extra parkland because of the request, and any developer can ask to have a rezoning from medium to, to a different, a high, high, high residential density.
Higher density.
Yep, and they can ask, yep.
Yeah, yeah. It, it is, Counsel, as you know, it's ten percent of the development. You're, you're saying because the density's going up, there should be more parkland, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, good point.
And I think we talked about the increase of parkland anyway, but if, if that could be part of the, if CAO, if you're going to add that as part of the agenda for the official plan, please.
Okay. Counsel Twill?
Yeah.
You're supplementary?
So, so this property, this land in question, was, was brought before council previously? So...
It's been going on for five years?
I'm sorry?
It's been going on for five years.
Okay, so now, the applicant is looking to increase the density.
In one area, yeah.
In one area. So, so, okay, fine. When it was brought up previously, what was the, what was the response from the community?
But it wasn't, but it wasn't brought up with the...
No, 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 previously, five years ago, what was the response from the community?
No, just one second. If you go to the document, page fifty-five in your, I know, it's, it's right there that, it states that the neighborhood, neighborhood has seen considerable growth over the past five to ten years. When Montgomery Heights subdivision was proposed, the full buildout was expected to be approximately twenty years. However, given the demand for housing over the last five years, the area bounded by McWilliams Road, East Royalty Road, and St. Peters Road has almost reached full buildout. That's what they're saying. So, all I can say, Counsel Twill, it's going to a public consultation. We'll have our CAO as active manager at the public consultation, hopefully with some planners, and get the public's input, but I think this will be clearly explained, or brought to the attention of the, of all the attendees at the public consultation. It's only, again, it's a public consultation. Question?
Yes, question's called.
Question's called, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those against? Eight-two, Counselors Twill and Duran opposed. Next one?
Thank you, worship. Planning Board Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to accept the working site and building plan for St. Martha's Court, Lot twenty nineteen dash four, PID four nine two four zero five, and Lot twenty nineteen dash three, PID one one five four nine four seven, as per Section forty-four two six of the Zoning and Development Bylaw, and remove the requirement for design review for Phase Two and Three of the Approved Development Concept Plan for St. Martha's Court, PIDs four nine two four zero five, one one five four nine four seven, one 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 nine seven two six, and three nine zero seven four zero, and the follow, and follow the process for approval of the working site plan and building plans as per Section forty-four point two point six, Development Concept Plan of the Zoning and Development Bylaw be approved.
Question? Question called?
Question's called.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those contrary? Eight-two. Is that it for the report? Okay. Thank you, deputy. Thank you kindly. Counsel Norman Beck, Strategic Priorities, Communications, and Intergovernmental Cooperation.
All right, could be brief. We did not meet. No resolutions for your consideration? Any questions?
Thank you.
Feel free to ask me.
Counsel Twill?
Thank you, Counsel Beck. Counselor Beck, I would like to make a request to embark upon an exercise, an in-depth exercise. I believe it's time for the city of Charlottetown, in conjunction with the province of Prince Edward Isle, to review the Municipal Government Act. And what I, what I'd like to add to that is do a comparative analysis with cities across, across Canada, to see what are, what are some of the procedures, what are some of the processes, makes up the committees, those, those attributes. I, I think it's time now, after four or five years with the Municipal Government Act, you know, there's some sections on the Municipal Government Act that previous council, and I'm sure this council, would like to see, see some changes, and I think it's a good time to do that. I know it's not going to be done over a month or a couple of months, but I, I believe it's time to look at the Municipal Government Act, particularly when you look at the fact that we're a full-service community. You know, what works for us is not going to work for Murray River. Works for us is not going to work even for Kensington, maybe not even Somerside for that matter, because, you know, we're the capital city, we're, we're a city, we're the seat of government, there's a many, many, many attributes in this city. So I'd like to, you know, look at our act, for example, compare it to, say, Halifax, compare it to, say, Fredericton, and other, other municipalities, just to see where exactly we are in relationship to the, the structure, the organization, terms of reference, and how things, how things function. Please take your time, but I look forward to dialoguing with you on that. I think it's a, I think it's a right time to look at the Municipal Government Act. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, Counsel Beck?
Well, Counsel Twill, I could not agree with you more. In fact, we've had some unofficial discussions that have been going on with various members within this room, that have not, just sort of chatting, right?
No closed meetings.
No closed meetings, no, nothing behind closed doors. Let's be clear. Thank you for that, your worship. But I, I agree with you. I think there's always, kind of going back to the point about us being in a period of transition with some things, there are, I think we should always be continually asking that continuous improvement, how can we do things better? How can we be more efficient? How can we expedite things? How can we work together collaboratively with various community groups, different levels of government, that sort of thing? So I think the timing is great, and I, I think your point is well, is well-received, and certainly, I think there will be continued discussions going forward, and it may not be the last that we will hear of it here. So I think it's, I think the timing is good. I think we are at a new, we are kind of embarking on, down a bit of a new road. So it might be a good time to sort of look at some of our past practices, our current practices, and what do we want those to look like in the future? So I, I certainly concur with your, with your sentiments, and we'll be in touch. And if there is, Counsel Twill, anything in specific, feel free to pass those on. Like, if you want to give me some kind of little bit more detailed background in terms of what you're thinking, what areas we might look at, feel free to pass things on as well.
Go ahead, go ahead, Counsel Twill. Question two?
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Beck. Before getting into the concrete recommendations, I'd, I'd like to look at what other municipalities first are doing across the country. So I'd like to do my own analysis.
Sure.
To, to look up, you know, their makeup, and, you know, how, how things function, how, how they operate, and how things function, and, you know, I think we always should be open to assessing and reassessing, reevaluating, only makes the organization, the corporation, and, and council as a whole that much better. So before I get into the concrete recommendations, I'd like to do that comparative analysis, you know, here's what we're doing, and here's what we're not doing, and, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Malloyers.
Thank you.
Great idea, Counsel Twill.
Okay. Finance, thank you, Counsel Beck. Finance audit, tendering and administration. Counsel John McLeire?
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Counsel McLeire, could you just please stand when you address? Stand? Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Finance audit, tendering and administration committee met Wednesday, July fifth, two thousand twenty-three. The minutes of that meeting are in your package. We had a good meeting. The, one of the biggest things, I think I want to take your attention, is item seven. In the minutes, there was discussion, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four capital budget was a sixty-five million dollar budget, and if you look at number seven, Betty French gave a review, the city has to go to, has to issue, borrow some money, fifty million dollar borrowing request that we have to go to market for. Betty French has done some work on this, and there were three submissions received. RBC come in with the lowest grade at four point three two percent, and this was kind of, we were using a window of a five-year, five-year term and a thirty-eight, thirty-year amortization period. Also want to take to your attention, on the last part of bullet seven there, there were a few, there were a few questions from the committee on the RFP. I know Counsel Drang made a good suggestion, and endorsed and, and seconded somewhat by, by Mayor Brown, that could we, in addition to what the three quotes we got basically from the banks, would the, could the city explore going to the province to see if we could hook in with the province in terms of getting something to work out with them in terms of, you know, they're certainly a larger lender, and just wanted to explore the possibility, if there could be anything there that would ultimately, at the end of the day, work, and would it be an option, and preferably at possibly, potentially lower rates? So that, that is, that is being explored as we, as we speak. May ask, Betty or Eleanor CAO was also part of that follow-up to see where that could go possibly with the, with the province. And the other, the other thing that came out of that was if we did end up going with the RBC option at the four point three two percent, there was some detail, and what was submitted to was at the committee level regarding interest rate swaps and how that would, what that would look like on the RBC offer, and we, and there was some more, some more clarification needed around that, of which we're also awaiting, so. That is the, that, that was a big piece of that meeting. And then also, Manager Betty had prepared for us, and you have in your, your package a two-month financial statement there for April, May of this year, and if there's any questions on that or anything else, I've shared with you here this evening, I'd be doing my best to, to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McLeire. Counsel Twill, first of two.
Thank you for your report, Counsel McLeire. As Chair of the Finance Committee, you can recall, one of the major features of the forensic audit was, was the procurement. Now, following the procurement, we have a policy here in place for a number of years, but unfortunately, that policy wasn't adhered to on some occasions, and that was one of the major features of the forensic audit. I've been a strong promoter and advocate for a number of years about a bylaw, procurement bylaw, and that seemed to be the consensus around the table, we need to move into the next, into the next phase of the procurement, and that would be a bylaw. Has this been discussed at your committee? And if it hasn't, could you please put it on the agenda for your next committee meeting and start to formulate a procurement bylaw? bylaw so that everyone in the city's corporation, council, and more importantly, the community at large understands, you know, here are the steps that need to be followed when it comes to procurement. And, you know, we strengthened it, we put more teeth, and that's where I believe a bylaw comes into place. So it is crystal clear. Thank you.
Counselor McElhair.
Thank you, Counselor Twill, for that comment and follow-up. You know, I couldn't agree more. It is something that I believe is in our matrix, that, you know, to be followed up on. And I, CIO Eleanor may be able to confirm if we're going to meet our timeline on the projection of that, if it's to have a deliverable on that. So I'll maybe just ask the CIO Eleanor to comment on that. Thank you.
CIO Eleanor or the manager of finance, one of the two, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
Either or.
Thank you, Your Worship, through the chair to Counselor McElhair. Yes, the procurement bylaw is in process. We're working on drafting it now. I would hope it would come to the August meeting, or maybe the September meeting, because we want to send it both to legal and to our auditors to have them have a look at it and give us comments as well. And we want to do as thorough a job as possible. So that will be in process, and will be coming along soon.
Counselor McElhair.
Thank you for that, Betty. Counselor Twill, does that answer your question?
Yes, in terms of a timeline, yes. I'm pleased with the timeline that you've just outlined, our manager of finance. And I'm hoping that our bylaw is going to be very comprehensive, and that it's consistent with bylaws, procurement bylaws across the country. And that it is crystal clear, because that was one of the deficiencies. That was clearly outlined in the forensic audit, even though we did have a procurement bylaw. Just sometimes it was followed.
No, we didn't have a bylaw. We had a policy. Yeah, we had a policy.
Yeah, we had a policy. So even though we had a policy, sometimes it was followed, sometimes it wasn't. So I'm hoping the bylaw will really strengthen that procedure and process so that everyone understands the ground rules right from the inception.
Okay. The bylaw will bind us, by the bylaw. Counselor McElhair?
Counselor Beck. Just a quick question. Betty, I remember Counselor Bernard was talking about the environment and sustainability procurement bylaw, I remember, a while ago. Is there an interconnectedness with that? Is that all integrated into one?
Counselor Beck, just ask the question through the chair.
Sorry.
Counsel Dran. Counselor McElhair, red button.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. As to the, is it interconnected? I can't speak to that unless...
Want to defer it to the manager?
Yeah, defer it to the manager, Betty.
Sure, yes. There is a procurement, let me get the word straight, there is a sustainability component to the procurement bylaw. Our sustainability department has had a look at it, and they've done a lot of work in that area to add in the sustainability piece. So that will be incorporated.
So basically, sustainability lens towards all the procurement.
Okay. So it'll be amalgamated, consolidated, so all in the same bylaw. Okay. Counselor McElhair, no resolutions?
No resolutions. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Human Resources, Counselor Matart.
All right, thank you. The Human Resource Committee last met on July 4. The minutes of the meeting are included in your package, and there is one resolution for your consideration this evening. So if there's any questions, I'll do my very best to address those.
CIO Mohammed. Eleanor Mohammed, please read their resolution.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor Matart, seconded by Counselor Ramsey, be it resolved that the city of Charlestown accepts the highest-scoring proposal from Boydin in the amount of $76,490 excluding taxes and related expenses for the executive search and recruitment of two director roles as per file number 2023-032, and that the total project cost in the amount of $76,490 excluding taxes and related expenses be funded from the 2023-2024 operating budget specifically from the approved salaries for those director positions. That the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Counselor Matart, for your report. I won't be supporting this resolution tonight. And, you know, I went through the notes, and, you know, your committee wants to go outside for some help. You know, the company is, that it was selected, you know, it's a very knowledgeable company, and I can appreciate that. But the problem with me is, it's a huge amount of money to pick two jobs. You know, we have a human resource manager, and we have a CIO, and, you know, we have other people here, we have a director that could probably fill in the gap here. And, you know, take your applications. And I know when part of it had said, well, we'll go across Canada to seek a qualified candidate, and that's terrific news. But I think we, as a city, can advertise across Canada, or internationally for that matter, get the applications here. We can look at it, go through it, and come up with, you know, two directors as we see fit. I mean, paying $76,000 plus to fill two positions, I find, you know, very troubling for me when we can't get money for, you know, various things, to fix paving projects or to get projects. I find that it's an extreme amount of money for two positions. I know we use this company in getting our CIO, that was a different type of, you know, procedure. But with this, you know, it's directors here, the CIO could be involved, human resources could be involved. You know, I just feel that I can't support this expenditure. But thank you for your report.
Thank you, Counselor Dron, for your comments. I, too, during our committee meeting, brought up those concerns regarding the amount associated with the contract for this particular piece of work. And I think through discussion and some good deliberation that we had, it was brought to my attention and the committee's attention that, you know, these are highly skilled positions. And, you know, sorry to let me back up. You know, I asked the question, like, do we have that capacity within the corporation to do that, to, you know, to do those postings, do the job description for that, the hiring, the recruitment aspect of it. And, you know, my understanding was, is that, you know, that is a lot of work, and it's, in order to get a good pool of candidates from across Prince Edward Island, across the country, that a firm like Boydin or whoever, you know, would be successful would be the best option for success in that case. You know, and it does come with a price tag, unfortunately, and it is $76,000 and change. But I think, you know, when you think about all the time and effort that the city might have to put in to do that, it might come out the other end the same way. And that way, I know it'd be internalized more, it wouldn't be a cost. But, you know, I think with the acting manager, who's not here tonight to speak to it, but the CIO is here, and if she'd like to comment on that as well, she can feel free to do so. But, you know, at first, I was concerned about the cost of that. And, you know, through our discussions and the rationale around that, I think the committee came out and agreed that that would be a good way to move forward with these executive positions. CIO Eleanor, would you like to add anything to that?
This is my first.
Okay. Counselor McCabe, and just take that under advisement, CIO Eleanor, to answer.
And I understand Counselor Dron's concern with the price tag, too, but we just went through the whole BDO report. And I think the results of hiring these positions are going to help us in the long term with that. I also think when we are hiring up, and what I mean by that, the director's going to oversee our HR manager, right, in the end. And I don't think that would be appropriate for our HR manager to be involved necessarily in the hiring of the people. I know when I sat in HR before, we always said for positions that were kind of trumping the management position, that we would put those out. And I think it would be helpful for our CIO to have that in place. So I know it's a big upfront investment. My hope would be that when we have these positions in place, it's going to be a long-term benefit for our city, and I'm definitely going to support this.
Turn me turn. Okay.
Sorry. Thank you, Counselor McCabe, for adding that as well. And that was a great point with the position involved in having your HR directly involved in hiring someone who potentially would be reporting upwards to that position. So thank you.
Okay, Counselor Beck, and then Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, too, believe in the process. I guess I do have a couple of questions. First off, when we used, is part of this process involve this company, whoever gets this contract, coming back and doing a six-month 360? Is that no part of it?
No, Boydin was hired onto that.
Okay, that's fine. The other question I have is, I'm just looking at the scoring. And just to Counselor Dron's point, we see one, the top one command is $76,000, $76,500. The next one is $64,000, $12,000 less. Scoring difference is 86 to 91. I guess if you kind of look at those, are those comparable? And was there any discussion around, is it warranted to offset? Look, does one offset the other? One is less money, one has a slightly higher score, but both scores are pretty good. I mean, if you're talking in 86 or 91, we know with scoring processes, they can be interpreted however. I'm just wondering if there's any discussion about that.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. So there was discussion during our committee meeting on that evaluation criteria. And I think what we're starting to see, and not only with this committee, but other committees, is this question keeps coming up about this evaluation criteria. And when these packages are put together, you know, it's being identified as they went through this, you know, meet these four or five different criteria, and you get a score on that. So, you know, based on the rationale of this particular contract, and meeting the different criteria and the different scores, this is the outcome of that. But recognizing that, you know, I think in these things, we need to start being a little bit more descriptive on how we're getting to these decisions, not only for this committee, but possibly other RFP procurement outcomes. So, you know, because generally it was announced here, I mean, you can see down, there was a company for $24,500, if we want to look at low cost versus score. And so, you know, I think we're, you know, it always seems to raise a good point about how do we get to these decisions. I brought it up myself about an RFP for a bus, how did we get to that decision? I think is what I would challenge the corporation and the CIO, is to look at identifying in more detail how we can identify the criteria without giving up all of the information that got to them. I mean, some of that stuff is, as part of that criteria, is not, you know, public knowledge or privy to the other competitors within the RFP process. So assured to me through the same question I asked, is that they went through the proper evaluation process and the scoring aspects of it. And Boydin was the, what they felt was the best candidate for this, to execute on this particular RFP.
Counselor Beck, second question.
I'm not questioning really the process of the, I'm just saying that I think we're looking, I'm not in any way doubting the thoroughness or the work of the committee in terms of scoring. I was just trying to look at these on a balanced look and saying, are we comparing, are they comparable, or is there enough of a difference between the two? That was kind of a general comment. I appreciate the work put into it, and I understand that they go through the screening and the scoring process, and I appreciate that. So just wanted to clarify that.
Counselor Twill.
Thank you for your report. I know a lot of time and effort has gone into looking at this executive search, recruitment, directors. One of the things that, if you do a comparison with the last term council, we had deputy CAOs. In this particular case, we're looking to recruit two directors. And I wonder, was there any consideration given to hiring a deputy CIO, which would report to the CIO? And then if the CIO is not present, then they would assume that automatically, assume that responsibilities. I mean, we have managers in every department. Each one of them does their job and reports directly to the CIO. And I wonder, you know, would it be more prudent? And I don't even know if this was entertained or discussed at your committee level, hiring and setting up the organizational structure, CIO below that, the deputy CIO, and then report directly to the CIO. I wonder if that organizational structure, if Don McCormick was here today, I would ask him that question. But would it be more advantageous to have a deputy CIO as opposed to two directors, the deputy CIO reporting to the CIO? Was that even discussed in your deliberations?
Counselor Twill, I think we made the change to the procedural bylaw. When the interim CIO was here, Donna Waddell, we took the DCAO, and we dropped that from the procedural bylaw as one of the definitions. And there was discussion by the previous Human Resources Committee, Standing Committee, to go to two or three directors. Counselor?
Thank you, Counselor Twill. I can't speak historically what occurred, but what I do know in my short time here is that through the work of our former acting CIO, Donna Waddell, and the governance report that was provided, and the work done through there, was a recommendation to go with a directorship-style leadership across the corporation from the CIO and down to there. So I think in our discussions around this, and I think we've had discussions here as a council improving these positions, is that that would be the structure. We go, I don't recall a deputy CIO position being recommended in the governance report. So I do recall, I think it was at least, and might even been more than three directors. Was it two for sure? I thought it might have been more. But we have the acting with our director, Sue Fraser, there as well. So, yes, to answer your question, no, that was not deliberated through our discussions at the committee level. We're going on the recommendation that came through the KPMG report, through governance structure. And here's where we are today with those positions.
So in the governance review, it was staff that participated in that exercise. It wasn't members of city council. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but...
No, I participated. I participated.
Oh, did you? Okay. Okay, okay.
I did. I got a call.
So, and as I said earlier, under the quest I have, under Counselor Beck's committee, is to look at the current MGA, look at organizational structures, and look at, you know, how other municipalities function. Was there any comparisons with other municipalities, you know, the size of the city of Charlestown, a full-service community, maybe the city of Fredericton or Halifax for that matter, to see what their organizational structure is? Was there any thought given to that?
Counselor?
So again, thank you, Counselor Twill. Going back to the governance report, that was all identified in there, and I can't quote, but there was jurisdictional scans that were completed across the country. I think that Fredericton might have been involved in that, if I recall, and I don't have that here. But there were some jurisdictional scans done around how other municipalities, I think Halifax was in there, Fredericton, there was a number of them that would have outlined how corporations are working of similar size. I believe it was also similar size, like from a population perspective. So yes, all that work was done, which led then to the recommendation. Because again, there's your recommendations of better these are recommendations of better governance structure, and it's one that a former CAO, I think, set in place for the current CAO to kind of move forward on as a bit of a roadmap to move forward with the corporation and staffing. Hence, some of the other positions we're looking to hire, from the planners and other departments, the policing and fire services. We, I think we had five new positions there recently. And so there, I think we're starting to move towards staffing up accordingly based on the governance report and recommendations that come out of there.
Counselor, if I could just ask our interim Director of Community Services, she was overseeing her part of the KPMG, is that all right? Can you, is it all right to go through her?
Surely, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to just answer that?
I'd actually like to respond, too.
Do you want the CAO to answer it? CAO Mohammed?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, there was an organizational review done, it was referred to as a governance report, but it was more of a structural review for staffing, which is more under the purview of the chief administrative officer. In looking at the different types of positions that we needed, the challenge is that our current setup is, we are so flat. And there are best practices in terms of span of control in senior leadership positions. And the best practice is that you shouldn't have more than six to eight people directly reporting to you. And that's so you can maintain communication flow, good mentorship, good coaching, good control of what's going on. So coming into the municipality here, I have fifteen direct reports. The director, Sue, who we have on contract, has seven. Without Sue, I would have twenty-two direct reports. And then the manager of planning retired, and now I have twenty-five direct reports. So I think the answer to the question about a deputy CAO is, I think that's something that we could potentially look at in the future, but what we need to focus on first is getting the next level of senior management that needs to happen in this municipality, which is what you see in places like Fredericton and Halifax. They have a layer of management, and they have a layer of directors, and eventually they get to a point where they have, either they call them general managers, or they call them deputy CAOs. So really, coming in with the three directors, so we're recruiting for two right now, Sue is acting in the third position for director, which we hope to have funded in the next budget, this is the beginning of building that senior level of strategic leadership into the organization. And then from there, as we grow, we can definitely consider a deputy CAO. If we had gone the deputy CAO route, and I just had one versus the directors coming in, it means that they, each of us would at least have eleven direct reports, and that would still be on, be beyond the best practices in terms of span of control for senior leadership in municipal positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLeire?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to the comment, I know Counselor Dron, you know, made a good comment, I kind of struggled with it myself, you know, what to do in this resolution. You know, there is a cost, seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety. Counselor Matarat makes a good, makes a good point as well, there's a cost to having staff in our own resources doing it, and what the difference is in that, you know, obviously we don't have that number. But, you know, the city doesn't do it for nothing, there's a cost for they have city staff do this. I'm feeling, what I'm hearing from the information, is that this group may be in perhaps maybe a better, better position, more qualified to do this search. I see you nodding your head, CAO Elna. That's an answer, I guess, for me. So that's just, that's just a comment, I'm thinking out loud, I guess, or sharing my thoughts out loud. But I have a question. If we went with this recommendation, and Boyd- was the group, and Boyd- whatever fills the positions, we're going forward, we have these directors, would I be right in assuming or expecting that in future, that we, if we're fully staffed up to where we need to be as a, as a, as a, as a, as a city administration, that we wouldn't be doing a Boyd- thing, possibly, again, if we're fully staffed, that that is something that we would be doing internally? Is that a fair assumption?
Just, okay. Question to the chair of the committee?
Sorry, yeah, sorry. Sorry, Justin?
No, thank you. Thank you, Counselor McLeire. I will allow the CAO to answer that question, but I would think that, you know, once we get staffed up in these senior leadership positions, that is not something that we would probably continue to do. However, in very specialized, in areas like the planners and stuff like that, there may be a time where outside entities are a better resource to help us in recruitment of specialized positions. So again, that's just me speculating, but that, you know, based on the information and the discussions that we've had in some of the work that we've done thus far. So I'll hand it over to the CAO, if you'd like to add anything further to that.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor McLeire. So, to be clear, we definitely have the talent in our HR department who we'd be able to recruit. The challenge is, it's a very competitive labor market right now. And there's a lot of time you have to spend kind of hunting down candidates and attracting them, and that's the time they don't have. So what was very important to us in reviewing the proposals was to find a recruiter who had many municipal contacts and many successful filling of this type of director role. Our challenge as Charlottetown is, we're the biggest municipality on this island, and we are looking for candidates who are familiar working in municipalities of forty thousand and more, specialized in understanding the role of council, and administration, and good governance. And there definitely are candidates on this island. It's a small pool of candidates, and we want a larger pool of candidates, and that's why we're going with the recruiter in this case. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's just a comment, and it got brought up at our HR committee, but I think one of the things is, in the report, you're seeing the prices of the different companies that bid. And I think, and Counselor Beck alluded to it, it's a criteria that I think council needs to see, and I know the CAO just alluded to a few of them. And I think that's what's important for us to get, is that criteria on the scoring, so we can realize, okay, well, this one is sixty-four thousand, one seventy-six thousand. What was the difference in the scoring? What was the criteria for that? And I think, I know the director's working on that now, making sure that it's all consistent, and we'll all get a copy of that. But I think that makes it a lot easier when you start seeing these numbers and trying to put in, like as you said, eighty-six to ninety-one, what's the difference there? When you see the scoring criteria and what they scored, you'll better understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, and it is, you have forty points for approach methodology, work plan, forty points, no, thirty points for that, forty points for experience and qualifications, twenty points for cost proposal, so I guess if you're low bid, you get twenty points. References and completes, and completes of submission, ten points. So it's there, but you want to see the breakdown from each of the evaluators.
Yeah, that was part of the package. I think everybody would get a much better understanding of how the scoring occurred.
Okay. Counsel Bernard?
All right, thank you. Just to wrap up, I just want to swing back to Counselor Beck. At no time did I think you were criticizing that process. I was, thought you were asking the same question that I asked during the thing, so I think it goes to exactly what Counselor Bernard is now indicating. I agree, you know, it's sometimes hard to wrap her head around, how do we get here? And again, it's not just here, it's all the RFPs we do. So I didn't take any offense to your question. To Counselor Twill, there was jurisdictional scans done on the governance report, it was St. John's, Fredericton, Halifax, Cornwall, Ontario, and the town of Inverness, maybe?
Innisville.
Innisville, sorry. Okay, town of Innisville, on that particular thing. And just on that, so I hope I addressed everybody's questions here tonight on this, and maybe you can go forward with the resolution, if there's no further questions.
Okay. Question?
Yes.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay? All those against? Nine-one, Counselor Dron opposed. Okay, that's it, Counselor Matarat? Thank you kindly. Next report is Counselor Kevin Ramsey, Protective and.
Thank you, Your Worship. We met, I'm just trying to read here, I'm getting old, June twenty-seventh at our meeting, and we have a first reading to amend the city of Charlottetown taxi bylaw, and there's two resolutions for your consideration. Any other issues? We're certainly trying to answer. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon?
Is there a resolution?
Okay. Okay, Counsel Ramsey, Counsel Twill? First of two.
Last month, I brought up the issue of the outreach center in the city of Charlottetown, which is located in between two city schools, and there's a number of activities taking place on this site. Illicit drugs being used on the site and off the site. First question I have is, is who authorized the NGOs to allow these activities to take place on the premise, on the property, and outside of the property? That's my first question. And secondly, as chief police, have you reviewed any options with respect to the facility, the state of the facility, and the response from the community? As you know, there's not a day that goes by that people from the constituency are, I don't know, there's lots of words to describe it, frustrated, there's a lot of agony, there's a lot of fear, intimidation, and this is not what the community anticipated when this facility was put there, without any consultation or any communications. I had a snapshot of what was going to take place when it was down on Waymus Street, but concerns are raised, to no avail, it's gone there regardless, no public consultation, no collaboration. You know, here it is, take it or leave it. And it's been, it's been very, very difficult for this community. We're over two years now, and hasn't gotten any better, in fact, it's gotten worse. So, I know last month, chief, you said that you can't shut the facility down. Is there any provisions in the Police Act that would give you that authority to shut this facility down?
Okay, Counsel Ramsey, do you want to deal with it, or do you want to put it through the chief, or what's your?
I certainly will, and I understand Counselor Twill's frustration, and everybody's, as I stated last month also, when I drive by there, too, it is not a site you want to see for anybody, no matter if it's schoolchildren or ordinary residents and that, and it's very frustrating, but I will pass it on to the chief. Please, he might have an answer in that. Thank you.
Chief?
Your Worship, Chair, Counsel Twill. We're certainly, I guess I'll deal with your first question from Counselor Twill first, regarding the authorization of activities down there. There's no authorization of activities from, I think individuals make decisions, and given the challenging dynamics of the issues that are, and the individuals that are at the site, it's not an easily controlled issue, regardless of who gives authority or tries to police it. I can tell you from a harm reduction point, although, however unsettling those activities are on the site, and unsettling to passerby's and residents, I would suggest that those activities would be increasingly unsettling if they were in the streets and neighborhoods around the site. And so, I'm certainly not condoning the activities, I mean, trying to raise awareness that these issues are not easily overcome and not easily policed, or not easily authorized or unauthorized by the NGOs that are running the site. We are in constant contact, daily contact with those NGOs, trying to problem solve each and every issue. But there are just no easy answers to the situation. Furthermore, there's nothing in the Police Act that gives me, the chief of police, the power to shut that down, other than some sort of public safety emergency. And it's not at that state, it's not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. However, there is an acute awareness by myself, my officers, and our stakeholders of the issues and concerns from yourself and neighbors and residents of our city about the outreach center.
Counsel Twill, I just want to go with someone else first. Counsel McLeire? Or no? Counsel McLeire?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just the last question, I guess. Just like, just like to share in the outreach center, personally, I had the, whatever, Good Fortune ran into John O'Ralt, who's very much involved with the outreach center. Anyway, he offered me, he said, you know, if you're interested in a tour anytime, get in touch with me, be happy to tour you, give you a tour of the outreach center. So, you know, I did that just for my own personal interest, and bit of an eye-opener for me, for sure. But I'm just, and I know there's all kinds of sensitivity over what the solution is to this, and I'm not standing up suggesting one, but I'd be curious to ask the chief, or to the chair first. In the absence of this not being where it is, and not, and it not providing the service that it's currently providing to the, to the user group, or the profile, the folks that are in that situation, if that wasn't available, what kind of, what kind of situation would the city be in if that facility wasn't, wasn't there?
Counsel Ramsey? Let's chief answer that.
Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor McLeire, I can tell you that those services they're offering at the outreach center are much needed. And as unsettling as the situation currently is, I suggest if we did not have those services provided, we would be, as a municipality, in a greater state of concern. The location of the services, I'm not advocating for one location or another. I think no matter where we offer these services, there are going to be people that are not happy with them there. I do suggest, however, and I've communicated this, that the current location is highly visible, and had always been a intersection that, and area of the city that is high traffic, and perhaps not the best location. But where the best location is, is not for me to decide, but only to provide input when requested.
Okay, Counsel Twill, second question.
Chief, drugs are being, being used throughout the neighborhoods, whether it's down in the parks, throughout that entire, throughout that entire community. It's going on on a daily basis. And, you know, the information I have is, of course, you probably have the same information, I mean, there's people coming into our city, nobody knows where they're coming from, whether they're coming from Metta Province. They're told to come here, that they'll be looked after here. This has been very, 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 very difficult and hard for this community. It's not fair to this community, they don't feel safe in this community. We have people living in this community for seventy, eighty years. I have a constituent on Olivera Street, she's ninety-five, and this is. I have a constituent on Olivera Street, she's 95, and this is what she has to contend with. It's poorly thought out, the location was poorly thought out by the province of Prince Edward Island. Again, I'm not sure what additional information they need, but I can tell you from the community, I said it last month and I'll reiterate it again, one or two things, move the facility or shut it down. This community needs a break. This is in between two city schools, across the street from a business, next to a seniors' home, and lifelong residents that live on Olivera Street, Houston Street, Waymouth Street, Birchwood Street, Longworth Avenue, all in that entire community. This is simply not fair to this community. It's not fair that they have to live in these unprovoked times. And again, I'll say it, this community was never consulted, there was no collaboration. Here it is, we're putting it there, and it's just not working. It's time to move the facility or shut it down.
Counsel Twill, thank you.
And, you know, Chief, I hope that as we move along in this process, you'll come to the forefront and reinforce what I'm saying. And I mean that sincerely, because it's simply not fair.
Okay. Counsel Twill, thank you. And we all agree that this is not the right place, but where do you move it is the big question. And, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's the thing, and I'm very pleased Counsel Twill said, but what it sounds like, to a certain extent, in my view, is that we're endorsing this as a city, which we are not. We're helping to sort of keep the thing, I mean, with our police officers there every day, and we're being a resource for two police officers for the next year or so, and everyone else would love to see it somewhere else. But that's not our call at this moment, I do not believe, because the province owns the land. And, but I know the Chief and everybody are always in, are always in contact with the province over this issue and seeing where we can resolve it. So, Chief, if you have anything to add on?
No, just to, your worship, to acknowledge Counsel Twill there, that I will certainly, you know, certainly have the concerns of the residents in the area at the forefront of my mind. And in when the discussions proceed about any potential movement, that I will be sure to make them, make them aware of all the issues and so everyone is fully informed about all the, all the challenges surrounding the, any potential sites that could be proposed in the future.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Counsel Ramsey, probably, I guess, April, May, I think, May, we talked here about difficulty the Police Department was having in finding summer cadets and how hard it was to be hiring, like a lot of positions, professional positions, getting hired to hire. And I think the Chief made a comment that, you know, we're lucky here in Charlottetown. Prince Edward Island is an area that would attract new cadets. And I was looking for different times in the minutes, I thought there'd be a conversation about the process to start hiring some more police officers. Because I understand, I believe the national standard were 10 officers below the national standard. So, I'm going to ask again if you could take that back to committee, start that discussion now. It will be going in the budget here within six months and be nice to have a lot of this stuff ironed out and see if we can't get some officers hired and get up to the, get up to the standard we should be. Just, you kind of get afraid, you start having burnout, a lot of these police officers, which is what we don't need. So, if you could take that back to committee, start that conversation, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for that, Counsel Bernard. And we did have, like the Chief and I did talk a few times about this, and it is a budgetary item, but we will be bringing it on the next agenda, like to make sure that, and as I stated here in council a lot of times, we have to be prepared, you know, to add on to the police budget, because it's going to cost us if we want to bring up, you know, have more officers. And everybody's recruiting right now, right out of, out of the system, I guess, Chief. And, you know, I mean, before we had an opportunity to say, I mean, try Charlottetown for the summer, but now, like, they're hired right away. And that's right across Canada. So, we will bring that up, and that's a very good question. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up, your worship. Yeah, that's why I'd like you to start the conversation now, because being in the budget before the law, it's nice to get a little bit organized, what officers can we afford? Because you're going to need police cars and equipment, so on with it. So, I'd like to see that started. Thank you.
Okay. Ellen, can you just, no, Counsel Twill, you've already got a couple of questions, you can come up later. Can we just go over the amendment to our bylaw?
First reading.
First reading. Do you want it?
I have other resolutions first.
Do the resolutions first? Yeah, okay. Resolutions. It's a long one? Okay. Get a glass of water.
Thank you, your worship. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at 75 Darchester Street, PID 337980. Warning posted on April 14th, 2023, pictures taken. Constant complaints about the mess of garbage and cans on the street, have spoken with the owner. 56 Maplewood Avenue, PID 408708. Warning posted on May 18th, 2023, pictures taken, no progress, unable to contact the owners. 63 Spring Park Road, PID 354324. Warning posted on May 9th, 2023, pictures taken, no progress on cleanup, this is a repeat offender. 16 Douglas Street, PID 356584. Warning posted on June 7th, 2023, pictures taken, have spoken to the owner, no progress on cleanup. 18 Douglas Street, PID 356576. Warning posted on June 7th, 2023, pictures taken, have spoken to the owner, no progress on cleanup. 17 Ashburn Crescent, PID 372672. Posted warning on June 16th, 2023, pictures taken, no progress on cleanup. 11 Ashburn Crescent, PID 372656. Posted warning on June 16th, 2023, pictures taken, grass has been cut at this location. 16 Elena Court, PID 1098391. Posted warning on June 16th, 2023, pictures taking, taken, an ongoing issue with garbage, spoke with owner and advised. 144 Nafso Street, PID 371187. Posted warning on June 20th, 2023, pictures taken, no progress on cleanup. 61 Bayfield Street, PID 361196. Posted warning on June 16th, 2023, pictures taken, no action on cleanup. 155 West Ridge Crescent, PID 703116. Posted warning on June 6th, 2023, pictures taken, cut only front lawn. 32 Centennial Drive, PID 394759. Posted warning on May 25th, 2023, pictures taken, no progress on cleanup. 594 and 596 Queen Street, PID 777680. Posted warning on June 22nd, 2023, pictures taken, no progress on cleanup, repeat offender every year. 225 North River Road, PID 366724. Posted warnings on June 5th, 2023, pictures taken, minimal progress on cleanup. 17 Beach Street, PID 365528. Posted warning on June 20th, 2023, no progress on cleanup. 11 Beach Street, PID 365361. Posted warning on June 20th, 2023, no progress on cleanup. In the city of Charlottetown, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous and Unsightly Bylaw of the city of Charlottetown.
Five North Road, it's June, January, that should be just June. Yeah, thanks. Okay. Counsel McCabe? It's on the floor now.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. And, and thank you. And Counsel Ramsey, I know that there's already been discussions started at the committee level with this, as well as with Island Waste Watch management, and even conversations with our MLAs at the province and our staff here have kind of started that process, thanks to Scott and Sue for starting those. The issue is, as, and I heard the message, education's the best practice, and I think education's a really big part of this. But when we start to get into repeat offenders, and we've seen that through the bylaw officer's report, multiple offense, multiple offense, and I know what we've done in past practices, put a lien on the property and we come, but that's not really immediate enough, in my opinion, when I look at it. And I guess, Chief, I'm wondering, is it possible to start billing these repeat offenders after so many times for the hours it costs for our public work staff to go in and do the property? Like, could they be billed for the hours that it takes? I mean, we have our public work staff that have been going weekly to clean up properties, and that's our resources at the city. And I know, from just being a parent, if you continually enable people, if I never asked my kids to do, if I might always pick up my own kid's dishes, why would they put their own dishes away if I'm going to constantly go behind them and clean up my own kid's dishes? So, I know finding's not something, but something has to happen in the immediate, and can we bill that? If they don't pay their bill, then we put them to collections or whatever, like, there's got to be, there's got to be something we can do for the consistent repeat offenders. I don't know if hitting them over the head, but the stick would be what I would suggest, but something to, to deal with the immediate, you know, after two or three times. I'm just wondering, is that something we can do?
Thank you for that. Counsel McCabe, you're exactly right. In fact, this was brought up at our meeting last month, and it's getting out of hand. And just talking to the bylaw officer, he called me the other day, again, of all these ones coming in, he said he'd get another page full coming for next month. So, it's just, it's so frustrating that there's, some of them, they're absentee landlords, like, they own the property, but they don't live here, and he's forever spending hours and hours and hours tracing these people down. Some people don't care. I talked to a Counsel retired one time there last week, I think, I forget something. Why should we, as a corporation, go in and clean up someone else's garbage? And if we do it once a month or every second week, then they're just going to keep piling it on again, because, you know, the city's going to come and get it. And that's not fair to the neighbors and anything along that line. And on a final note of that, we have to, as a council, change the rules that this doesn't come before council for our approval. Our bylaw officer should be able to go, do his job, I mean, without that coming to council, because Counsel Dron, I talked about that a few years ago, like, I mean, we're the middle man here. Because if something goes in your neighborhood this month, well, then it's probably six weeks before they even get there, if there's no meetings and things along that line. So, let the bylaw officer do his job and get us out of this whole thing, and he can nail them any way he can. I don't know how he's going to do it, but he can find them and things along that line. But there's no way that, that Charlottetown Public Works should be going into these properties time and time and time again. And you hit the nail on the head, the same properties. It's so frustrating. Thank you. That's my end.
Counsel Dron.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Counsel McCabe. And I think it's, you know, first up to the mic here gets their point across, because everything I was about to say was just repeated, so I think I'll just reinforce it. I do believe, you know, in seeing these properties that are coming in, and one, you know, it's one thing for lawn grass and some other things, but the thing that I take offense to is the garbage. And I really feel it's a very unsafe, unsanitary position to be putting our public work staff in, to be cleaning garbage up for residents in Charlottetown, who are refusing to follow the proper provincial, you know, IWMC procedures on how to sort and do and such, for a very nominal penalty of some sort. I think we need, I don't know if we can do summary offenses, we need to be able to do stricter fines, because that's the only way we're going to fix this problem at the end of the day. And again, it can go right across from, you know, to grass and many other debris on property. But I'm sorry, I just take real offense to the garbage situation, and I do, and I've spoken to the CAO about this, and, you know, and having staff reallocated to important projects that are happening around the city. And, you know, as counselors, we're all here wondering when things are going to be done, and they're not getting done as a result, because we have more than, you know, whatever seems like 20 things here today that are going to be all addressed and dealt with by possibly city staff. And I think it was mentioned here that there's going to be another list coming right upon this one. So, it's just, it's ongoing and ongoing. So, just another reinforcement to everything that was already said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship. I think this has been an ongoing problem for a number of years, and I know, I guess what happens is the lien goes on the property to help pay for the work that the city puts into it. I'm just wondering, who sets the fee for whatever that is that the lien goes on the property? Maybe that's what should be looked at and become a lot stiffer, because I think the summary offenses, we've talked about that over the years, and there's always seems to be a wall comes up that we can't really offer summary offenses, and always seems to come down to a lien on the property. And maybe whatever we're charging for that lien is not here sufficient. Because obviously, if we're going back to the same property two or three or four times, then it's not sufficient. So, I think maybe that's something we can look at. I don't know who sets that, that price, the liens going on the property. If anybody can answer that, I wouldn't mind hearing that answered, but, and then what that, what that, what that fee would be, and I think maybe that's what needs to be looked at. Hello, Scott.
Good evening, folks. So, yes, so, depends on type of work. If it's a contractor that does the work for the city, so there are some work that we contract out, it gets, the value of the contract or the invoice is what is invoiced out, and if it's paid, it's paid, if it's not, then a lien gets put on the property. If it's city forces, then it's based on the hourly rate, so we have a charge out rate for every piece of equipment that we may use out on, in the field, whether it's a lawnmower, chainsaw, whatever it is that we need to use, trucks and all that, plus our hourly salaries for staff, including management that are involved in it. So, it's a, that's how we base every job that's been charged, or any job that we do on private property that comes through this bylaw.
Okay. Can we just, just one minute, Mr. Forbes, or legal, maybe you can talk about summary offense ticketing too.
I rarely like to jump in. Counsel Bernard, just to your point about the potential for increasing the value of it or making a fine, Mr. Adams already spoke to the value of that lien that goes on it as the value of the work done or the value of the remediation. You wouldn't be able to increase that or create a, create a fine out of it in the absence of a summary conviction offense, because otherwise you're prosecuting people and fining them for something they haven't been convicted about.
No, thank you. And that's why I say we come across these roadblocks before and the summary doesn't work. But I think what I'm looking at is if we're just doing the hourly fee and what it costs for our equipment, we're not near high enough for taking the staff out of the workforce. So, I think there should be a fee, and I mean, if it's 21 bucks an hour you're charging to go cut the grass, well, you know, you make that 50 bucks an hour, 75 bucks an hour, whatever that may be, because it's honestly not working, because somebody going back three, four, five times the same property. That is possible, is it not?
No. Not for you, summary offense ticketing.
I would say that the wage value would have to be within the range of what the marketplace would reasonably charge for that service. So, you could pick high, but you couldn't pick higher.
Okay. Yeah. Deputy, we'll have to get another mic free for you there. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, the mayor's been asking for, I think it's, well, since we were elected, for a summary offense ticketing bylaw, and I think every, for years. Every meeting we go to, we ask about it. It's, it's a little more complicated than we like. If you look at best practice in other municipalities, it's a, it's something you need to have the legislation, your provincial legislation needs to change in order for you to have a solid summary offense ticketing bylaw. So, for example, you can see other, some municipalities, because the legislation is different than ours, if you're not adhering to an existing municipal bylaw, you could actually have your driver's license taken from you. But we don't have that. So, our next step is creating a summary offense ticketing bylaw. But unfortunately, the legislation with the province needs to change to support that, or we are just status quo. Thank you.
I know, it's my second point, and my, just for clarification, I know all of that work is still to come and still has to happen, but that's why I was asking, are we within, within a right to bill? Not fine, if we look at it as bill, if we have to go out to... If we have to go out to Julie McCabe's house three times because I hadn't learned after the education and after the conversation, and can I just be billed for what it would cost for those public work staff to come to my house to clean the garbage? And like anything, when you get a bill from Bell, a liar, and you don't pay it, then there's natural consequences that go with that. I'm just wondering if that's something we could look in the short term, and it's just bill as is.
Look, you know, can we not, again, go back to what Halifax and other jurisdictions have? They have a summary offense ticketing system. I know it has to be amended in the Planning Act or one of the Acts of the Legislative Assembly, but this just keeps coming, they keep growing every month. And I think our bylaw enforcement officers dedicated is just doing this work.
He's borrowed.
Counsel Ramsey.
Did I hear one, one time that the, they don't always go against lien of the property, but they go on your water bill or something? Am I correct along that? Did I hear that somewhere? Or on your property tax, or?
We, that's property, property taxes, the province, they collect the tax.
Yeah, so, you know.
We don't collect it.
I don't know. It's very frustrating, that's all I can say. It's, it has to be changed.
Counsel McLeary.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Is it, is it conceivable, and maybe something for the committee, or maybe there's an obvious answer to this, like, with these apartment buildings, we tend to tuck, or I understand that most would, you know, would go after the landlords. Is it, is it, is it possible that the tenants themselves could be, could be brought into legislation and, you know, in some way?
No, tenants don't own the building. Landlord owns the building. It's a tough one. It's every month, Chief, every month. And I know it must be difficult for your bylaw enforcement officers just to come back every month, every month. Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have two questions. I know a couple of months ago, I had asked Chair Cox and Palmer, they were tasked with amending the Summary Proceedings Act for their bylaws. I'm just wondering where we're at with that, if they've gotten anywhere with it. And second part, and thank you, Mr. Adams, for that explanation of the payments, of how the equipment is billed and that it, is there any information or statistics of how many people are paying these bills that they're being given? 10%, 20%? What percentage? And if not, how many liens are going on? And if any of that is being collected back into the city as well? Especially with all these repeat offenders, obviously, it's not high enough. Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey.
I can, Chief, you want to take that? Would you ask? That's above my pay scale.
Certainly. I think the work for the Summary Proceedings, Summary Offense Bylaw is, there's a few facets to it. I think that work is ongoing. I know it is for the Street Fenders bylaw, and I think there's other work going on for other parts of the bylaw. You know, if I can just comment, well, I have the mic here on, on Worship's comments on Summary Offense Ticketing. I think that that is something that we should be striving towards. I think it gives us a mechanism as an enforcement arm to hold people accountable in addition to whatever services are provided. And helps us address that immediate concern by issuing, issuing a ticket. But there is challenges in, in trying to recoup those, those funds. There's work involved in all of that, and additional resources required. On, Your Worship, on Counselor McKinnon's second question about the recouping of potential monies, I'm not aware of that information. I'd have to defer to finance. That's far down the road from, from, after we, we do our work and Public Works does theirs. But I can certainly bring it to finance and try to source an answer for that. I think, given the, the time period, that some of that could span over, it would be hard to measure that. But I can certainly endeavor to do, get an answer.
Okay. Counsel McKinnon? Good. So, Chief, just to end this, so, our Summary Offense Proceedings, Summary Proceedings Bylaw, Mr. Forbes is here, it does have a Schedule B, failure to register a dog, failure to register within 10 days. We can't add these issues that are coming up to that? Is that, is that, I think that's following up the question from Counselor McKinnon. Can't we just add putting up a building without a permit?
Yeah, as to why it is that unsightly bylaw can't be translated into a summary conviction, I'm not able to answer that right here today, but I agree, there are all kinds of bylaws that are.
Yeah, straight here. Fire prevention bylaw, nuisance bylaw, smoking bylaw, look, can you even get a smoking bylaw?
Yeah, there are a number of bylaws that are prosecutable on summary conviction. I'm not sure why that, that bylaw is excluded.
Could, could, could we look into that? I think that's, is that the, Counsel McKinnon, is that what you're asking? And also, the data on what's been collected? Can you just rephrase it?
Yeah, just look into, I guess, some of these, why has it taken so long to get this added in to the Summary Proceedings Act, so that we can have the enforcement officers go ahead and issue tickets for this bylaw amongst others that are just, they're not enforceable at this point?
Okay. Take that back?
Yes.
Yeah. CAO can help you out too. Question called? All those in favor, say, raise your hand. 10-0. Against? No. Okay. Counselor Twill is in conflict with this one, so he's leaving the room.
Thank you, Your Worship. Protective and Emergency Services Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to demolish the building at the earliest opportunity located at 282 and 284 University Avenue, PID 359802, deemed necessary by the City Chief of Building Official. And to remove any other materials debris to clean up and properly dispose of the same, do any infilling require to return the property to its original safe state at the owner's expense on the property located at 282, 284 University Avenue, PID 359802, in accordance with the terms of the City of Charlottetown Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw.
Counsel Dr.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I don't know where to begin of how we're at this. Again, you know, I think we talked about it last month or the month before. I think council agreed that we were going to take the family in and discuss their plan. Speaking with members of the family, they're having some issues with leadership there. You know, the person that's in control of this property is, you know, she's having a hard time dealing with this. So, the family has come together, you know, we talked about this, that they have a plan in place. They've hired some outside people to look at the building, to see what their options are. And I think council agreed that it was going to go back to the committee. The committee was going to take the, the family in and discuss the plan. You know, this is very troubling for the family. I don't know why, why we were dealing with this. We asked the committee to look at all other properties within the city. And I think there was a, there was a, a group of properties identified. There was probably, I believe, there was 15, but it wasn't put forth at the committee level. I don't know why. You know, I look at the resolution, and it, and it comes from Counselor Ramsey and Counselor Beck. And I mean, Counselor Ramsey, you know, we, we look at a, a property up by the university that's been derelict, leaking terribly for 30 years, and we haven't done anything about it. Counselor Beck, I think there's a property near your area, down in Queen and Houston Street. Walls are falling in, nothing's been done there. There's various other places that, that the, the City of Charlottetown hasn't been looking at, hasn't been pushing forward to. And then I get a long, long, long list of where we started on this property to where we're at now. Why are the other 14 or 15 properties not given the same dedication of staff's, you know, insight to it? Why isn't these 15 other properties given the same accountability? Why are we looking at this property consistently over the last three years, you know, until we get here that we're going to demolish the building? You can go to COVID, you can go to anything that this family has, has done everything that this city has asked, in fire, in police, they, they closed off the windows, they took any appliances out, they did anything that was asked. But these other properties around the city, nothing's done, and we're not discussing it. I think this is terrible. I think this is, this should be taken off the agenda until the committee does what we asked them last month and get the 15 properties in place, get the backgrounds, and treat them all the same. You know, I think this is a witch hunt on this family. I don't want to be part of it. You know, in, in the last meeting, the deputy mayor has asked to defer this. And Mayor Brown, you, you were adamant of getting this to council, of saying that you've been pushing this. You know, it was very disturbing, as the leader of the city, why you would pick on one family and one family's property, other than the other 15 properties. It's very upsetting. You know, this is causing a great deal of concern to the family. They're gonna, they're gonna do something. And I think with this last push, you know, they've sat down and they discussed things, they have a plan in place. So, I, I can't understand why we're, we're going to go in with bulldozers and knock it down tomorrow. You know, the, the building inspector has looked at the outside foundation, he deemed that he thought that it, it wasn't, wasn't acceptable, but he didn't go in the basement. I, I have other properties that, you know, that, that look, the foundation may be cracked or, or missing a part that's still suitable. So, I don't want to be the, the council that, you know, demolishes this building for this family. Let's, let's them come in like we agreed to, see their plan, and get a plan of action. And I, I think they, they gave lawyers, they have a lawyer, I think, I believe, that they sent it to you, Mayor Brown, and CAO Eleanor Mohammed. But there's been no interaction with the lawyer. I, I don't know why. You know, the family seems to be, you know, beside themselves, why, why this council or our legal team or senior administration won't work with them, but we're stuck on knocking this house down. I, I just don't understand it. You know, I, like I said, I know the deputy mayor had asked for a deferral. You know, I would ask, again, politely, to this council for a deferral on this resolution, so the family can be part of the process. You know, I don't think we would treat everybody like the, the people up on, on University Avenue or Queen Street. You know, we're not, we're not, we're not dealing with them the way we're dealing with this family. So, I asked the council, I'll put it on the floor for a deferral, to engage the family and come up with a reasonable expectations of moving forward with this, with this application.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
The deferral is on the floor, do I have a second? Okay, second. So, the deferral is on the floor.
And we'll speak to the deferral first. Okay. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And I guess, just to, for point of clarification, last time, we didn't have an updated report from the building inspector, which we now have, that's been in the report. And with any policy, I do believe there should be steps in that. So, the information came, and I know that the family apparently received the, the report quite last minute to the committee meeting. But I still think a piece is missing, and I know it's time and I know it's resources, but when we're talking about tearing down someone's home, I think we need to communicate. I think we need to have conversations with people before we go in as a city. And I guess that's my question. Has the family been briefed on the situation? Has there been an opportunity to sit down and look at whether or not they were going to take this into their own hands and figure this out themselves? Or are we just going to go in and, and take down a house? So, for me, I'm, I'm not going to support this resolution as it is if those steps were missed. So, I just want to know, was there conversation? Like Counsel Dr. has said, that there wasn't. Was there?
Well, there was. Yes, there was. The family had the report for going on close to three weeks now, from the building inspector. And we had our meeting, it'll be three weeks this week, I believe, that they got the report, they got the, Monday night, maybe it was, on a Monday night. The bylaw officer already talked to one of the homeowners, one of the sons. He, he said, you should sit down with, with the owner and discuss things. And he said, that's a good idea. As far as I said two or three months ago to you, is that I asked the owner who phoned me one night, well, one of the, one of the family members, I should say, he's not the owner, one of the family members, I said, could you give me a time schedule? So, I can take it back to council, and we can work with you. Can't get, I can't do that, Kevin. I can't give you six months, I can't give you six weeks, I can't give you two years. So, so I'm just saying, so what am I supposed to do with this? This has been going on for six years. He said, yes, it's going on, it's going on for six years. They finally let the building inspector in, and the fire inspector in, and the bylaw officer inspector in, two and a half weeks ago, we'll say, just to be rough. And it was brought back to our committee. The facts are there, the report is there, as everyone can read it. It's unsightly, it's dangerous, and that's from the building inspector. And you say it's a witch hunt? That's foolish. It is not a witch hunt, because if this property would be in, no, no, but that, that word come out. But if that property was next door to any one of us, like, we'd be still saying the same thing. What are you doing at City Hall that you're not removing it? That hasn't been touched in six years? The police chief broke it all down at our last council meeting from 2017, the dates and all that thing. So, we, we were asked to have the building inspector in by you, and we, you know, we did it. We had the fire inspector in, all of them back in again. So, now, we had all, we, all bases recovered. So, that's all I can say. Like, you can vote whoever you want. Like, I'm still going to go to sleep at night. But it's not fair, because this has been on the books for six years.
Counsel Beck.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Your Worship.
Too many speakers on.
I wouldn't, I would not be in support of the vote for a deferral. I think what's important when we're looking at these properties, I would agree with you, Counsel Dr. on that we have multiple properties that need to be looked at in the, in the future as well, too. This is not picking on one particular property or dealing with one particular property. This is one property that, when I look at the bylaw, I look at our derelict property description, I'll hold it up here, dangerous property, building where the walls or vertical structures lean or buckle to such an extent that it presents a danger to the occupants or other persons, shows clear damage or determination, improperly distributed loads upon floor, insufficient strength to be reasonably safe for the intended use or occupation, has become dangerous to life, safety, health, and welfare of the occupants or the general public. When you look at the report that Mr. Eisner, I'm sorry, I can't remember his name, Trevor Eisner created, the terminology is used, it poses a danger and appears to be on any reasonable repair. Structure inside would require removal of all building materials. Foundation exterior would require a partial complete replacement. It goes on, rot, environmental separation is non-existent, unfit for human habitation, unsafe condition for any occupant who may enter for any potential emergency. We have a bylaw, and for me... We have a bylaw, and for me, I think what we have to do is we have to look at the bylaw, we have to look at the property, and make a determination whether it fits. We don't have a column for addressing family issues to throw into a consideration in that. This is a property that clearly fits. Sorry.
No, they keep going on.
This is a property, this is a property that clearly fits our description of derelict properties, dangerous, unsightly, oh, not unsightly, I'll retract that. The other part for me is going back, the one I think, I'm going back to our last meeting, the one part that was missing was the structural assessment for me. And when Mr. Eisner comes in with this structural assessment, for me, it was kind of filled in a missing piece of what the usefulness or potential usefulness of this building is. I agree with moving forward on the other properties that are around, that we know that exist in this city, and I'm fully supportive of addressing those issues in the future as well. This one here, for my, in my opinion, clearly fits our bylaw. The Mr. Eisner was unequivocal in his assessment, very clear, and I cannot support a deferral. I will be voting in favor of the motion as it's outlined.
Counselor McHale. Thank you, Your Worship. I recall when we discussed this at the, you know, the two council meetings ago, there was a lot of unanswered questions, there was a lot of uncertainty about what was done and wasn't, what was done and what wasn't done. And there was, seemed like a lot of desire and compassion to work with this family in order to find a reputable solution at the end of the day. So my question is more to do with, you know, it looks like we got the structural assessment done that we were looking for. Still a little bit gray there in the sense of, you know, the foundation, whether that's safe or not safe, there was a, you know, on the exterior, it might look like an interior, not quite sure because nobody was down there. Counselor Ramsey, you indicated the homeowners received the report three weeks ago. I guess what I'm failing to see here is, you know, is a plan that, is the family willing to work with the city or themselves to determine the outcome of this building themselves? Because I'm looking here to vote on a motion to allow the city to basically bulldoze the place down. So that leads to me, or I'm asking the question, I mean, say, they're not willing to work with this, because I don't see an alternative plan here that says, "Yes, okay, we've identified that it is this, we identified it's that, the city agreed that, you know, we would go back and have a second look at this." But I was under the impression the family was going to say, "Okay, great, let's take this opportunity to work this out and figure out a long, like, a plan." And let's be honest, three weeks' time to find this out and then all of a sudden they're gonna bulldoze down tomorrow. I mean, if the family decides that they want to address this, that's gonna take some time to do that. It's not gonna happen overnight, within three weeks. If we, clearly if we vote against this tonight, I don't imagine there's gonna be happening tomorrow, but it could happen relatively quickly. So I'm concerned about, we don't know what the context around the property owner is, their plan to do now that we've gone this far with them, we've given them almost that second opportunity. If there's no willingness to do anything with the property going forward, then, you know, I think we're at that stage. That's what I thought we were getting to. But I don't know if they're willing to do anything. And second of all, I agree with Counselor Duran in the way in which there are a number of properties. So if this is gonna be the catalyst for what we do going forward, then we should see these once a month. There should be another one next month, and another one, and another one, and another one, and another one. Because there's 15 properties across Charlestown that would fit the same description that Counselor Beck just rhymed off of. So if we're gonna make this move on this one, there's no letting up, and the rest are gonna follow, they have to follow. We can't use this as an example, if that's what we're gonna do, if this is catalyst for that. So I'm still a little bit conflicted, and maybe Counselor Ramsey, can you address my question around, you know, now that the family has the information, and they do understand that it is an unsafe property, and that the city is willing to come in and do something if action is not taken by the family in a time that we believe would be, you know, reasonable, and that could be six months, too. I mean, it's a lot of, you know, planning to bring in somebody to do that kind of work and expenses and so on. So if you can address that, that would be great.
Yes, and I'm just going with what I've been told, too, and it's just, they had six years to work with it. They were warned a couple times and things along that line. Now, I was told, as far as this afternoon, I was told that the fire inspector sat down with the mother last week, and she said, "I'm not putting any more money in any of my buildings." And he said, "Well, because one of the sons wants to buy the building and sort of do something." I'm just going, like, if they lie to me, they lie to you. But I'm just saying, so she owns the building, she owns the property, she has the final say, she's the head of the family. And that's fair ball. Like, that's her right. Now, as you stated correctly, this is not gonna happen tomorrow. If the family can sort of walk in with us in the next short while and say, "This is what I plan on doing, this person's gonna buy the building, or we're gonna spend this or do this," fantastic, we're willing to work with them. But, like, you know, like, it's only common sense. But it's an abandoned building, it's been abandoned for six years, and this is it. And as far as an inventory, I think the mayor asked two months ago for an inventory of properties. The bylaw officer and the fire marshal, up until Friday, were sitting down, and we have a list so far of properties that are around the city, and the one is on University Avenue, Counselor Drong, sorry, Counselor Drong, and all the other ones, two or three you mentioned tonight. But we gotta start somewhere. And this is the one that we got the most complaints on. So now we're gonna go ahead with this one, and then go ahead with the next one down the road, and the next one down the road. But they all gotta be cleaned up, because for a half hour, we just talked about garbage being thrown around and, you know, things like that with our bylaw officer. So we have to put some teeth in this thing.
Counsel Drong. Thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown. And I understand what everyone's saying here, but again, if we have 15 places around the city, let's get a policy or whatever it takes to treat them all fair. There's a process, you refer to six years, you know, we got the most complaints. Well, I'm sure if you go back 25 years to the building up in University Avenue or the one in Queen Street, the complaints there would be well more than what is here in the last six years. So, you know, we talked about process and working together with the city. Again, you're taking secondhand thoughts from somebody that, you know, the mother's not doing anything. You know, they have a lawyer in place, bring the family in, which the council has asked to do, sit down with them, and if they say it to our senior administration, "We're not doing anything about it," then, we can say, as a whole council, "Okay, they're not doing anything, we have to move forward, there's a process in place, then we'll act on it." But to have this here tonight, pass it, saying, "We're gonna have the heavy hand, and we're gonna take that house down as soon as we get this passed," I don't think that's right. You know, we're a welcoming city, we're doing our best to try to clean it up, and we're starting now. Let's get those 15 properties in place, let's get the policy in place of how we're gonna deal with each property, and like I said, we can take one. But this one's six years, the others are 20 and 25 years plus. So I don't know why we're picking that one out, you know, just because someone had a complaint. Let's get it in place, let's get the process in place, let's try to be reasonable with the family, and, you know, and let's take the stress out of this, get the family down, the family dynamics talked a bit. Then if there's a definite no, we're not doing anything, then we can move forward with that. But I'm asking, please don't do this. I know what it's like to deal with an elderly parent that's in control, you know, I think we all probably do here. And they have to be given the opportunity to sit down and talk with them in a professional way, you know, with a lawyer, with a family member, you know, because everything to them is black and white and no. So let's just reach out, get the family in like we discussed, and please do the process and for the next 15 that are coming down the road.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess for me, and I kind of take the name out of it, I just look at the situation. And I've been following this one from the last reports we had, and then it was asked to get structural integrity, somebody have a look at it, which I was waiting for also. And I do understand from the reports, been going on for five or six years, and you have to understand, the city, most of these issues are complaint-driven. It's not like it's a witch hunt or that's complaint-driven. So the properties that are, need to be, have counsel go out and do the appropriate measures to fix them up, so be it. When I'm reading, when I read this one, I read the report, I think it was last month or two months ago, it was a lengthy report of all the work that went in it with the staff, what they've come up with, what they found, and then somebody wanted the structural integrity of it, and I understood at one point, there were a lot in the building. But anyway, I guess somewhere along the line, the chief building inspector get in the building. Now that I see his report, which he conducted inspection, which resulted in recommendations for destructive, he removed at the earliest possible date, the property owners are receipt of the report, can approach the city prior to the regular meeting of council in June should they wish to discuss the matter. I guess I have a question. Did they get a hold of the city to discuss the matter? Would be one question. To me, now that we've had a billing, city billings, or the chief building inspector, chief building officer, went and inspected, and moved notice here how serious this is, then there's a city in a live-wast situation if we don't do anything about it. And it's starting to remind me of Towers Road years ago, where we lost some young kids that were in an abandoned building, had a fire to keep themselves warm and burnt to death. So it's not a pleasant situation to be in or to be trying to deal with, but, you know, what that's we were elected for was to make these decisions and make these tough decisions. I'm going by what the professionals are saying, and so to me, I'm not interested in deferring it, I'm interested in dealing with it from the facts that we have and that we've been getting. So I guess the only question I have is, did the family contact the city in the last three weeks?
Not to my, if they didn't contact me, now whether they're... As I said, the fire inspector spoke to the owner, and the bylaw officer spoke to one of the sons, as of Friday, when I talked to the bylaw officer.
Counsel McCabe.
Just on that, in talking to them, what come out of that?
Well, what I got from the, I said, what the fire inspector said, that she doesn't want to put any more money and do any verbatim. And the bylaw officer stated that, he said to one of the sons, "You have the report, why don't you sit down with your mother and go over it?" He said, "That's a good idea." Now, I didn't hear any more on it, whatever happened since then.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm also not in favor of supporting a deferral in this as well. I think it's been going on, as you stated, in six years. Counselor Duran, you mentioned that the family does have a plan in place. My question is, have they brought that plan to the city to look at and for the council to address it? If we have this many properties, we have to start somewhere. This one came in with many complaints. This one was brought to council, we need to act on this one, move forward. Like Counselor McHale, you mentioned, next month, we'll do a different one, move forward. I think we'll keep it going, but I think we need to stand behind the professionals, the inspectors that have gone into the house, produce the report that was asked to follow the process, the process was followed, the report came forward, recommendation, I think council should go with that, so, thank you.
Excuse me, can I answer his question?
Do you want to address that? He's asking a question to Counselor Duran regarding if the family was, had a plan?
Yeah, well, we all asked, I even asked the same question. And, I mean, for a plan, and they can't say anything. And I'm in agreeing with you, Counselor Duran, if the family want to come in with a plan, I mean, more power to them. But how long do we wait again? For another three months, six months, or, I don't know, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, so Counselor Drong, this will be your second time of your address, okay?
Yeah, I'm just answering his question. You know, I'm led to believe that there is a plan in place. You know, they hired an engineer or someone to do an evaluation on it, and you say, "Well, why isn't this family approached the city?" Because they didn't approach the city because at the last meeting that we had, the city was gonna reach out to them and invite them in. So they're sitting around waiting to be invited in. They're not hiding, and you say, "Why didn't they, why didn't they reach out to us?" Because they were waiting to be invited in. And I think, I believe they were waiting to go to your committee meeting, you know, to be invited in. You know, so is it miscommunication here? Like, this is it. I'm told that they want to come in, they want to address this, they have a plan that's coming down, whether they're gonna tear it down or fix it up. You know, they're willing to come in and give your committee or senior administration their plan moving forward. And it's not gonna be waiting six months. You know, they know we're dead serious here. So it's like, you know, you get in, you make your plan, give us 30 days to come up with their plan, to give the plan to your committee, and if they can't, then so be it. You know, that's, but I'm just, I just don't think it's proper to get in the business of picking this one out and not like other ones that were here 20, 25 years.
So May 30th is the meeting that we had where it was deferred. There was a request to get a structural, a structural assessment. They approached the family, they did a structural assessment. If you go back to your May 30th package, "With respect to the resolution above, process and procedure was questioned, Counselor Ramsey referred to the police chief who provided a chronological investigative report with, investigative report timeline with respect 282, 284, University Avenue." So the structural issue was being discussed. Counselor McLeer.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, myself, I'm not in favor of a deferral, but am I not right in assuming, well, the points that are raised by Counselor McHale, Counselor Drong, and Counselor McCabe, that if this resolution does pass on the floor tonight, does it still not give the family the opportunity? I know it says demolish, but it's, does it still not, I'm up the understanding, it still gives the family an opportunity to respond to that in some way, if they're agreeable and want to come to the table? Like, am I right to, can somebody confirm my right in that assumption?
Counselor Ramsey, you want to refer that to the CAO?
I think, Your Worship, I did want to point out that their legal did reach out to speak to our legal team. It's also worth noting that the family had to let them into the house, so they have been involved and they have been aware. There has been no plan sent to me in terms of moving forward or anything additional than that. In terms of the bylaw, I'm not sure how it's worded, that when we pass a resolution to demolish, if there is space in there to allow for further discussion? Chief, is there?
Um, it's not, you know, I don't know verbatim what the bylaw says, but my understanding is that there is opportunity post-resolution for remedy to be sought. And I would like to add that, and just reiterate what I had mentioned before, this is not done lightly. I did personally attend and meet with a family member today and advise them that this was on the floor tonight, and that we were certainly still open to finding a resolution with the family, regardless of what happened tonight. Certainly, this is something that, you know, we certainly do want to be collaborative in finding a resolution, too, so I just wanted to add that. But in my, my understanding of the bylaw, Your Worship, that there is opportunity to find a post-resolution remedy.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess I'm, you know, I'm hearing a lot of different discussions that have had with the property owner, you know, last minute up till today, and yesterday, and the day before, and three weeks ago, and I'm going back to... yesterday, and the day before, and three weeks ago, and I'm going back to, you know, I think what Councilor Duran has indicated, like, you know, I'm just hung up, sorry, on, you know, has the family come to here, and maybe that's the route, I don't know if they're coming to the CAO, or who they're actually supposed to come to, who are they supposed to come to and say, "Okay, here's our plan, this is what we're going to do, if we don't act upon that, then we're, then we're doing this," plain and simple. I feel like there hasn't been that, that gap hasn't been bridged yet, I don't know where that occurs, I mean, you know, the CAO was contacted today, or yesterday, by their lawyer, the chief has been contacted, the Councilor Ramsey's got discussions, or heard discussions about it, everybody's got a little bit of piece of this puzzle, nobody's putting it all together to say, "What is the end result here?" You know, I'm kind of happy to hear that if we, if this resolution does pass here today, that there is opportunity for a resolution after the fact, I don't know what the timeframe would be, but again, I think that, I know we're talking about deferral, but I was under the impression that we were going to go out, we were going to seek this information, and then give them some time to make a plan, and present that plan to, I'll say the committee for lack of not knowing where it would go, so to the committee, Fire and Emergency Services Committee, since in the absence of that, I don't think we've given that opportunity to do so. It feels like they talked a little bit of everybody on something, but somebody from that property ownership should bring something to the table, in the form of a package, and say, "Here's what we're doing." And if they don't, then we move forward with this, it's that simple. You know, I feel like we haven't done that, and so for that reason, you know, I vote to defer, I guess, or I would support a deferral, in the absence of, because that's what I really thought we were getting to, and I don't think we got there, so.
Councilor Duran.
I think, I think the easiest way around it, Your Worship, is, and you know, if people are concerned that the family still might want to have resolve in this, then just put in a friendly amendment, under the earliest opportunity, and put a time, after a three-week timeframe, if the owners and the city can't come to an agreement, then the resolution is enforced.
That's it.
So just, if you want to add that friendly amendment.
Yeah, and I think the chief, the chief is, the chief of police has made it quite clear, he's, he's not, he doesn't have a contractor already lined up to go in tomorrow morning, it's, it's about working...
Just put the friendly amendment in the resolution, because the resolution usually goes, what's it worded, so...
So, the friendly amendment you want to add, just...
Yep, earliest opportunity, after a three-week timeframe between, if the owners and the city can't come to a resolution.
Councilor McKinnon, do you second that friendly amendment? Okay, so...
We actually vote on this?
No, no, just, just one second, the friendly amendment is now on the floor to be debated. That's how it works.
Yep.
So the friendly amendment is now on the floor, it takes over from the deferral.
Yep.
Okay, so friendly amendment's on the floor. Go ahead.
Clarify that, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Friendly amendment would be, so if you have the resolution in front of you, if you read where it says demolish the building at the earliest opportunity, then it gives the address, and you would add in the earliest opportunity, after a three-week timeframe, if the owners and the city can't come to a resolution, and then it would continue to read on, property number.
See it? Yeah, just one second. You have to turn off your mics, guys, I...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Cal, go ahead.
I'm just asking for, for legal's advice here, the deferral's on the floor, then now we're taking precedent over a friendly amendment, and then that will defeat the deferral.
The deferral will go on the floor.
So, is that, is that...
Just one, that has to come through the chair, can they, can we discuss the friendly amendment before the deferral?
So we've got, friendly amendment is to add to the...
Resolution, correct. Add, add where it says?
And a timeframe.
So do you have the resolution there?
So in other words, the resolution reads, Public Works Manager be authorized to demolish the building at the earliest opportunity, adding would be after a three-week timeframe, if the owners and the city can't come to an agreement.
There it is, right there.
But we had a deferral with a second on the floor.
I think Councilor Duran was right, that the deferral has to be lowered off before the amendment.
So, if you devote the deferral, then the resolution that goes on the floor, just one second, could, that friendly amendment could be added, correct? Okay, good, okay. Questions on the floor of the deferral? Question called? Question's called, okay, all those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay, four, Councilors Duran, Councilors McCabe, Matar, A, Deputy Mayor, Yankoff, all those against. Councilors Bernard, McLeer, Ramsey, McKinnon, and Beck against, so, the deferral is defeated, now the res, the original resolution's back on the table, could you add your friendly amendment?
Sure, can we add the friendly amendment to after...
...the opportunity, if we still want to try and work a resolve with this family, that it would say, after a three-week timeframe, if the owners and the city can't come to an agreement, that the resolution is enforced.
Second by Councilor McKinnon.
I'll second that.
Okay, Councilor McCabe, on the friendly amendment?
On the friendly amendment, so when you're talking about a three-week timeframe, is that, is that saying that at three weeks, staff who need to come together, family, there will be opportunity for them to come together, to have a discussion, to see if there is some sort of negotiation that can happen, and if after three weeks, the family chooses but not to come, like, it's summer, is that going to be enough time for our staff to come together to meet with the family, and to do, have those discussions?
Yeah, my understanding is that, you know, they've had their report now for three weeks, I'm hearing some talk around this room here, that they probably don't have enough time for an opportunity to speak to the city, CAO has said that nobody's contacted her in the last three weeks, they've had their report for three weeks, so, some people are saying, "Well, that's not enough time," so what I'm suggesting is, do a friendly amendment to the resolution, give them more time, we'll reach out to them, because I think Councilor Duran said that we were supposed to reach out to them, so staff can reach out to them tomorrow, or the next day, and see if they want to have a discussion in this, and what can we come up with an agreement. If we can't, then we move forward with the resolution.
So, discussion's out, the friendly amendment?
Okay, Councilor Beck.
I do understand that, I'm just wondering if three weeks is long, like, would six weeks be better?
Well, I guess once the conversation starts, if we're making headway, like you say, the chief's been talking now, if they're making headway, we'll know after three weeks.
Councilor Beck, and then Councilor Matar, did you have your hand up? Yeah, we'll get you out.
Yeah, I guess I'm just unclear, who's going to come up with this mutual decision? Where's that falling? Is that falling into Chief McConnell, is it falling into planning, is it falling into Chief Mimi? Who is, where is that landing? Who's overseeing that? What's that successful resolution going to look like? If we're looking to find a resolution, who's overseeing that, I guess would be my question in terms of, who's going to determine what that successful outcome looks like?
Yeah.
So, I would like, I would like a little bit of clarity in terms of who's going to own that, who's going to oversee that?
Yeah.
Who's going to eventually come back with the decision to say, "Yeah, we've got a successful resolution," because I don't know who that's, who's lap that's falling on right now.
So clarify, if I'm wrong there, CAO Eleanor, the dilapidated dangers on slightly bylaw falls under police and fire, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so it would go back to police and fire to direct those?
I assume they've been dealing with it all along?
Yeah.
So it would continue to be the same departments that dealt with it all along, this has been ongoing for quite a while.
Yeah, got that? Go ahead.
So, does that come back to us, do we re-vote on that again, do we, they make the decision, and they ultimately say, "We've got a successful resolution"?
I don't think that the chief, the two chiefs would go out and make that decision on their own, without talking to the CAO, and the CAO, I'm sure, would say to council, "Here's what's going on, do we want to discuss it?"
I would also assume that if there is a change, and there is a resolution, that it would come through the committee to council.
Correct. Okay.
So, in order for the, okay, let's say it...
Just, could I just get the deputy first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship, I would consider the friendly amendment, if we could change it from three weeks to eight weeks, I think three weeks, especially in the middle of the summer, is, is a pretty fast timeframe to, I mean, get anything done, I mean, we're understaffed, people are on vacation, it's, you know, three weeks I don't think is, is a healthy timeframe, so, if we were willing to change the friendly amendment to a friendlier amendment of eight weeks, I would be willing to consider it.
Okay, just one second, I don't, thank you.
If I could just make a suggestion, you might be able to have the best of both worlds, you could have, whatever be, three or four weeks, extendable to a maximum of eight weeks at the discretion of the CAO.
Yeah, you know what?
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, in all fairness, we seem to have a, have a good path of what we're going down here, within a couple of weeks.
And we'll pile those other 15 or 16 properties that we're talking about?
Well, you got a, you got a chief building officer here who's saying that this has got to be removed as early as possible.
Yeah.
So it's structurally not very sound.
Yeah.
So, you know, what he suggested, fine, go ahead, but we should, through staffing, deal with this in two to three weeks.
Yeah.
Easily.
With a maximum rate, correct?
So, Your Worship, with this, okay, let's say the phone call's made tomorrow to the family, correct, for a plan, and see if they'd like to meet, who are they going to meet with, the CAO, or who?
CAO, look, we got two chiefs.
Yes, no, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yeah, they, again, clarifying what Councilor Beck has asked, they will be along with our chief fire inspector, would be there too, you could have your chief building inspector, but yeah, but the report's there, they can take the report and say, "Here's what has to be done."
Yes, okay, I mean, but the committee doesn't meet with those, with the family?
No, it's not the committee, no, that's an operational issue.
I don't know, okay, thank you, I'm just trying to clarify that.
Okay, get the friendly amendment on the floor. Ready to vote on the friendly amendment?
Three weeks?
Three, two, A.
Maximum of eight?
Maximum of eight. Extended?
Between three and eight weeks?
Extended to eight, if required, if required.
I don't think you're going to need eight weeks.
Yeah.
I don't think you're going to need eight weeks to get an answer.
But again, it's, it's a compromise by saying, three, max eight, minimum three, max eight.
I'm not voting six. I know.
Okay, we're voting on the friendly amendment, that's what we're voting on, okay.
So what are we voting, three?
Minimum three, max of eight.
With the minimum of three, is that if we don't hear, if we do hear something from them before three, we're giving them an extension, or?
I would leave that to the two chiefs to say, "Look, we need a little more time, we're up to eight weeks." So that's the friendly amendment. Question on the floor for the friendly amendment? Question? Question's called, okay, who's, please raise your hand if you're in favor of the friendly amendment, minimum three weeks, maximum to eight weeks, please raise your hand.
Six.
Eight, eight, it was eight.
Two or three?
Well, it was recommended by the deputy, eight. Well, what do you want to go, three to six?
Three to six.
Three to six, okay, is that a right, Councilor Beck? Councilor Beck, three to six?
I'd be here.
Okay, minimum three, max six, all those in favor of the friendly amendment, please raise your hand. Okay, we have Councilors Bernard, McLeer, Ramsey, Matar, and Councilor McKinnon, all those against. Okay, Councilors McCabe, Beck, Duran, and the deputy, the friendly amendment carries, so it's three, minimum three, max six. That's the friendly amendment, that's the friendly amendment, now you're voting the main resolution.
We're back to the main?
Yes, and if you, again, again, no, no, but this is the process we're going through, a deferral was asked, on the deferral, to clarify, it was asked to put a friendly amendment, legal said you can't do that until you vote on the deferral, we voted on the deferral, the deferral went five against, four in favor, then we went to the friendly amendment that was put on by Councilor Bernard, he said minimum three weeks, it was asked by a couple of councils, Councilor McCabe, and I think the deputy mayor that said six to eight, so we went with six, right? And so, now the friendly amendment is minimum of three, maximum of six.
And don't, don't forget, I mean, if...
The resolution's back on the floor. Okay, question on the floor about the resolution, can you put that resolution back up? Okay, so, can you please, CAO Eleanor Mohammed, could you please add, read the resolution again, with the friendly amendment? That's what's on the floor.
Thank you, Worship, I'll give it a shot. Be it resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to demolish the building?
At the earliest opportunity.
At the earliest opportunity.
Well, is it the earliest opportunity after a period of three to six weeks?
Three minimum, six max.
Three minimum, six max weeks.
Yeah.
To work with the family, located at 282, 284 University Avenue, PID 359802?
Work with the family to come to a resolve.
Work with the family to come to a resolve? Okay.
I don't think you need that, no, no.
It's deemed necessary by the chief, City Chief of Building Official.
Yeah.
That would be the change.
And could I also say, instead of family property owner, or owners?
Sure.
Okay. Enter, we have any other materials to bring to clean up?
Really, my mind, it's to give, to give the city, city staff and the family, three to six weeks to work this out, if there's going to be a new plan, then bring it to us, some councils in there are saying they have a plan, some are saying they don't, so it gives us plenty of time, if more time was needed after six weeks, you can always come back here.
Okay, questions called?
Question called.
Okay, questions called? All those, no, no, questions called, all those in favor of the resolution as amended, please put your hand up. Okay, so we have Councilors Bernard, Councilor McLeer, Councilor Ramsey, Councilor Beck, Councilor McKinnon, those against the three, the amended resolution, Deputy Mayor, Yankoff, Councilor Matar, Councilor Duran, and Councilor McCabe, okay? Could I get that resolution, please, I need to sign it up?
Could I suggest if we're going to have a lot of these properties coming in the next while, that maybe you take back to your committee, this unsightly dangerous premises bylaw, and tighten up the process a little bit, so we don't spend 45 minutes trying to figure out what the next steps would be, when we're looking at taking someone's property and going in and demolishing it, and that way we could be really clear when we know if it's three weeks, six weeks, after the conversation, before the conversation, just moving forward.
Thank you.
Well, I think it was pretty clear, we're moving forward with the resolutions that came, because we've been dealing with it for the last five years, is what it told.
Just one second.
And I also know that, I agree with Councilor Duran, when he says there's been lots of people dealing with it, but there's lots of puzzle pieces all out, and it's just not together, so I think that needs to be clearer.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, Worship, and if I could just ask the chair to add to the next Protective Services Agenda item, the next property on the list, so that if we're back here this time next month, that, you know, if there is this list going, that, that we're not going to just stop at this, that we should be having one of these every month, so if I could just ask that that be on your next Agenda item, for next month.
Thank you.
Okay, is that concludes your report?
No, it was by law.
Could you just put that up there, CAO Mohammed? Is that first read or second?
First.
Okay.
Wait until Councilor Twill.
Oh, please, Councilor Twill.
Last?
Okay, is she just amending that, or where did she go? Did she go searching for him?
Trace is going to amend, she doesn't...
I think the deputy's looking for Councilor Twill.
Okay, City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw Amendment, Bylaw 2021-TX-01B, to amend the City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw, to increase the base fares within Charlottetown. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw be read at first time...
a first time, moved by councillor Ramsey, seconded by councillor Beck, and then be resolved that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, that it be entitled City of Charlottetown Taxi Bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by councillor Ramsey, seconded by councillor Beck.
Charlotte Carey. Good?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next report is Parks Recreation, I, thank you chiefs, I have to leave because I have another engagement, so the deputy will have to take over, sorry about that, but I think.
I'm going to actually excuse myself too, if that's okay, and I'm going to ask councillor McIlair, can you do the public works report for me this evening?
Don't think councillor McCabe is feeling well, so she's going to head out. Okay.
Okay, so our next report is Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee Report, and that is councillor Mitchell Twill.
Thank you, your worship, the report's in your package, we have two resolutions for a council's consideration, I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have before we get into the resolutions, thank you.
I'm just trying to read this little screen up here, I don't see any lights on, okay, if there's no questions, then we can move right on to resolution number one.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Moved by councillor Twill, seconded by councillor Bernard, be it resolved that as per the recently advertised request for proposals for the Mulberry Park multipurpose outdoor facility, dashboard system supply and install, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand plus applicable taxes from Global Sport Resources Limited, and that the amount from Kohl's Associate Limited and the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars plus applicable taxes for engineering professional fees and services during pre and post-construction be accepted, and further that, the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreement to implement this resolution.
I got it.
Go ahead councillor Twill.
Thank you. This is a commitment that we made a number of years ago when we first constructed the first outdoor facility out in Hillsborough Park. So this is our third one, last year we constructed one for West Royalty, that'd be in Mr. McIlair's ward, this particular resolution here, Mulberry, Mulberry Park, is a real tribute to the elected official for that ward, who from the beginning lobbied to have a rink with boards around it, so that there'd be more longevity and more usage, and the community would have a lot more, a lot more opportunity to utilize a playing surface that has a multipurpose to it. Now, having said that, the resolution to award the supply and install of the dashboard system for Mulberry Park multipurpose outdoor facility is the first resolution is for the supply install of the dashboard system, this system is deemed to be a better system than the wooden board system. The system consists of steel frame, puck board system and the fencing that attaches to the footing which surrounds the ice surface. In the winter months, this system will enable a tighter water seal around the surface to prevent water from draining out during the mild weather. That was one of the things that we learned with the first two facilities, the first one in particular, and a real credit to our Parks and Recreation staff for doing their due diligence and coming up with a methodology, which to my mind is much more effective and much more efficient. So I want to thank you Frank and all the staff for coming in with a different system, if you will, and I believe that we're going to have a lot more success with this, with this particular model. So that's what I'd like to say to the first resolution, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Twill, are there any other questions?
Question called.
Okay, all those in favor? Any against? Okay, it's unanimous then, nine zero, motion carried. I'm sorry, councillor McCabe has gone as well, my apologies, eight zero. We can now move on to resolution number two.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Moved by councillor Twill, seconded by councillor Matart, be it resolved that as per the recently advertised request for proposals for the Mulberry Park multipurpose outdoor facility site work, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid of two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents plus applicable taxes from Landmark Group Incorporated, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Go ahead councillor Twill and followed by councillor Beck.
The resolution to award the site work for Mulberry Park multipurpose outdoor facility, this second resolution is for site work portion of the project, which includes all site work and infrastructures related to the facility in preparation for the install of the dashboard system. This work is anticipated to start soon and be completed by September the fifteenth, so it'll be ready when the dashboard system arrives in September. Do my best to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you councillor Twill and councillor Beck.
Yeah, thank you for that councillor Twill, just a question, this site work, I'm assuming does not include lights, am I correct on that? I'll throw to you, Mr. Chair, could you answer that question? Yes, it does include lights, yes it does, that's been our, you know, that's what we did with the first facility that we constructed, that's what we did with the second one, and that's what we're doing here. As you know, it's dark, dark pretty early and this gives an opportunity, not just for the young folk, but all demographics, to be able to utilize these facilities, and I'll draw your attention once again to the fact that this is multipurpose, so the summertime you can play ball, hockey, box lacrosse, basketball, any other sports that.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, can't forget pickleball, so, no, I mean, there's a lot of excitement with respect for this facility out in Mulberry Park, I was out there a couple of weeks ago and ran into some folks that live in the community and they're pretty enthusiastic about this new facility coming to their neighborhood, and I think it's something that we can all be very proud of, thank you.
Thank you councillor Twill, any other questions? Councillor McKennan.
Thank you, deputy mayor, mine is more of a comment, due to the popularity of these multi-use facilities that are being constructed, starting off in Hillsborough, today it was announced that the Winslow Lions Club, they just broke ground this morning and they're building a multi-use facility in front of their Lions Club in Ward Eight, out there, modeling off of what the city has already done, so it's, obviously it's a popular facility and we're seeing them well-used through councillor McIlair's ward and Hillsborough, so I just wanted to make a comment on that.
Great, thank you for that, and go ahead councillor Twill.
Well, that's, I didn't hear that myself, but, you know, according to you, that's what's taking place, I hope they use the same blueprints and the same, you know, the same, follow the same prototype that we're now doing here in Parks and Recreation, because the last thing you want to see is them construct a facility and then experience all those different deficiencies. And like I said earlier, our staff has done a great job, have done their due diligence and we're going to have a much better product to showcase to the community, so I'm hoping they'll parallel what we're doing here in the City of Charlottetown. So I don't know if you're involved with the Winslow Lions Club councillor McKennan, but maybe you could reach out to them and have them give our manager a call to make sure that they're on the same path that we are, thank you.
Thank you councillor Twill.
Go ahead councillor McKennan.
Sorry, no, I'm not involved with the Lions Club, but it is in my ward, so I welcome this facility to be grown, being built in there, they broke ground today, the bulldozers are in, and the picture that they're showing is a model of the one that's in West Royalty Community Center, and they're using funds from their successful campaign of Tracy Ace to help build it.
Thank you councillor McKennan, councillor Bernard.
Actually, we could pass the resolution, then I might comment after that, it's nothing to do with the resolution, but I'm about to say.
Okay, so there's no other questions on the resolution that's on the floor? Okay, question called, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion is carried, seven zero. If somebody wants to ask councillor Duron to come back in, because unless he's in conflict with the question you're about to.
No, no, not at all.
And go ahead councillor Bernard.
No, just what councillor McKennan brought up, just letting, let them know, they may recall when we were looking to do West Royalty, we didn't have enough money in the budget, we were talking to the community center, the Lions Club out there, so that's where that started, and so we gave them our plans, because they had money raised and they wanted to build a facility like that, so they had talked to the city about our plans and getting a copy of them, and there was a number of volunteers within that organization that had worked on the first one and maybe the second one too, so then break ground, it's great news, and they, you know, they're looking for the same thing the city is building, and they're all looking for the city to flutter for them in the winter time, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. Now, folks, it is eight o'clock, so I'm going to have to ask the council if you are willing to extend our time so that we can complete our final four reports. Are we all good? Do we need, Tracy, do I need a time limit? Two thirds of a, do I need a time?
No.
Okay, all right, well, thank you everyone, and we'll see how we get along. Next report is Water and Sewer Utility Committee Report, and we'll ask councillor Duron to complete his report.
Thank you, deputy mayor, the Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on June twenty-sixth, or June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, I have one resolution for your consideration today, the manager was kind enough to give me a few notes to read tonight, so I'd just like to say quickly, as a reminder to residents, that seasonal water use restrictions are in effect from June first to September thirtieth each year. Charlottetown residents have embraced water conservation over the last decade, water consumption in the city is lower than it was in the year two thousand, despite the growth we have experienced in this city. Work has begun on the Passmore Street reconstruction project, and the first phase of the project is replacement of the sanitary sewer system. Residents are reminded that they should reach out to the utility to discuss replacement of their water service during this project, the contact phone number is nine oh two six two nine forty fourteen, and I do have the one resolution this evening to purchase a new replacement backhoe. So any questions from anybody, I'll try to answer them as quickly as I can, or the manager can jump in very quick, thank you.
Thank you for your report councillor Duron, does anybody have any questions for councillor Duron? Go ahead, councillor Twill.
Thank you for your report councillor Duron, as you referenced the reconstruction of Passmore Street, where the Water and Sewer Department is playing an indispensable role, replacing all of the infrastructure that is, that it is responsible for, we had a community meeting here not too long ago, Scott Adams led the meeting behalf of Public Works, I had an opportunity to, a couple of residents attend the meeting, all the professionals were there, and I've talked to before and after the meeting with the residents, and one of the recommendations that they brought forward was the burying, burying of the lines underground, that's your fiber optics, that's your maritime electric wires, and the manager pointed out that, that it's cost prohibitive, that it's an expensive proposition, I think it's safe to say, Mr. Adams, basically what you alluded to at the meeting, it's a costly venture, however, when you start to think about what we just have experienced with Fiona, I believe it's time the City of Charlottetown meets with Maritime Electric, Eastlink, Bell Alliance and any other service provider, we need to get control of the cities right away, and we need to sit down with these service providers and hammer out some type of a plan of action, I mean, this is a golden opportunity to bury the wires underground. All we have to look, all we have to do is look at Fiona, I mean, we've had people in this city that went without electricity for three weeks, that was a very, very difficult time, so what I'm asking is councillor Duron, your committee maybe could lead it off in conjunction with Public Works, what I'm asking is that, and I don't think it's too late, maybe I'm wrong, but when we're doing a construction of this magnitude, one point seven million dollars, this is an opportunity to sit down with the Maritime Electric, Bell Alliance and Eastlink, to sit down with them and form some type of partnership, or maybe we need legislation that goes back to, you know, maybe doing a jurisdictional scan as to what takes place in Halifax, what takes place in other jurisdictions, we can't let these opportunities pass by, is what I'm trying to advocate and promote, I think, you know, the burying of the wires is the way to go, there is precedent set in this city, if you look at Sydney Street, if you look at Victoria Row, maybe even Great George Street, the wires are buried, so this is not a new phenomenon, and when we're getting in the residential areas, especially these narrow streets, you know, we talk about aesthetics, we talk about ambiance, these neighborhoods to my mind are no different than what we see downtown, so councillor Duron, maybe you could sit down with your manager, maybe incorporate the manager of Public Works or C A O, let's look at some strategies that work in other jurisdictions and start to incorporate those strategies here in the City of Charlottetown. If we're going to spend that kind of money, again, one point seven million dollars, that's a lot of money, and while we're doing that kind of work, that's the time to bury the wires, that's a recommendation that came from the residents on Passmore Street, our manager did say it was, you know, it was a very costly venture, and I don't doubt that, but there's an old saying, if there's a will, there's a way, and I believe that we need to move in that direction, so councillor Duron, please, not only take that under advisement, but I'll work with you on it, and that's my first question.
Thank you councillor Twill, that's a great idea, I think you sit on Public Works and I chair Water, so maybe we can get our managers to have a discussion, to see where we go with the C A O and, you know, come up with a policy that maybe, you know, in this type of reconstruction, this type of, you know, of business that we're doing, this could be added into or looked at, we just, it's a good place to have a first step and move forward, and I'll certainly talk to our manager as well, thank you.
Thank you councillor Duron, second question from councillor Twill.
As you know councillor Duron, over the years I've talked about the flooding on Queen Street, I believe Water and Sewer Department is looking. I believe Water and Sewer Department is looking at or setting up some type of investigation inquiry, bringing in the professionals to look at flooding on Queen Street. It's been a major challenge for the folks that live in this particular community, especially when the water rises three to four feet, even higher. And I'm looking forward to see what, what plan of action, what methodology can be incorporated to deal, to effectively deal with the water rising. And of course, you know, climate change is on everyone's minds, and Queen Street between Douglas and Pond is no different. That's very, very challenging, very, very challenging in terms of the flooding and the severity of that flooding. Residents sometimes have to take it upon themselves to barricade the streets and shut the streets off so that the waves of water don't go into their respective homes, damage their properties. That's happened in the past. I'm looking to avoid that, I'm trying to be proactive. That's why I've risen here on a number of occasions, bringing that recommendation forward. Once again, Councilor Duran, I'm willing to work with you on that, but with all due respect, we need to make some progress on the flooding in Queen Street. We've got to make some progress.
Thank you, Councilor Twill, and thank you for that question. I know you've asked it many times, and we come back to the same conclusion, that this is one of the lowest points in the city. Our manager has looked into a few options. They're very, very expensive, because you have to get a drain that's, that's low in the city, up high or to drain down to the water. So, you know, it's something that we can look at again. I think he's come up with a few ideas, but again, they're very, very expensive ideas that you have, and, you know, we can discuss it at our next month's meeting. We'll ask to put it on the agenda to see if there's going to be an update or a best-case scenario, or what is the monetary outlook of that. But thank you again for that question.
Thank you, Councilor Duran, and over to you, Councilor McAlaire.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just interested, Councilor Duran, if the, the manager, Richard McKeown, spoke to the water usage over the last ten, twelve years, has basically been kind of status quo, or, you know, hasn't, hasn't increased. I just wondered what that would be attributed to mainly?
Thank you for that question, Councilor McAlaire. That would be a lot of it. I mean, you think of our city here, it's been, you know, ten, fifteen thousand more people go in, and I believe it's due to a lot of the public consultation, or, you know, to get people to save water, different times of the day where you're not supposed to water your lawn or wash your car, and then the water meters. You know, before, if you were just paying a five hundred dollar fee for the year, you'd let your hose run, water everything. So now, you know, with the implementation of water meters, you know, people are cognizant of how much water they are using and the education aspect of conserving water, and the city residents have been very good to abide by these rules, and I'll give our manager credit. You know, he advertises by different signs in the city, you know, to remind her to conserve water and do your best. So I think if our manager would like to, you know, jump in, if there's something else that he could come up with, free to jump in, but hopefully that answered your question.
Great answer by our chair.
Okay. I believe we have one resolution.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moved by Councilor Duran, seconded by Councilor Metard. Be it resolved that the City of Charlestown proceeds with the procurement of a loader backhoe, and that the city accept the bid submitted by Toromont Cat in the amount of one hundred and sixty, seventy-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars plus applicable taxes, to supply a two thousand and twenty-three CAT four twenty dash zero seven XC loader backhoe equipped and warranted as indicated in the bid, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, question's called. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, eight zero. Thank you. We can now move on to our next report, and that would be Public Works Committee. And is that Councilor McAlaire or Councilor Twill that's going to give the report for Councilor McCabe?
She asked for the right, and she asked for the subject.
Okay, then Councilor McAlaire, if you want to give the Public Works report. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy Yankoff. Yeah, the Public Works Committee met in June eighth, twenty-three. Draft minutes are in your package. Also, the Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities met June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three with draft minutes, including in this regular council package. There are two resolutions for your, for your consideration this evening. Just also, kind of, just, just, just a comment, our manager, Scott Adams, is here this evening. Just great to see the, the roundabout, the Belvedere roundabout getting the noises done, and anyway, it's, I know personally, every time I drive through that intersection, which lots of reasons to do so, it's, it's certainly, certainly a wonderful piece of infrastructure for the city. Great also to see on that, in our own ward, Owens Creek, the Owens Creek Plaza or whatever, it's getting, getting tidied up and looked after as well, so great, great projects that Public Works are involved in. So the minutes, as I said, from that meeting, you have, and are circulated. I'll do my best between myself and, if I can't, Scott Adams, to answer any questions council may have on the Public Works meeting. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you for your report, Councilor McAlaire. Any questions? I see, Council Bernard, I did see your light up for a while. You go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, Council McAlaire, a couple of questions or concerns, I guess, on the speed hump information. Kind of see where the department's going with it. Some of it makes sense, some of it's kind of scaring me a bit. So whenever someone requests it as a safety device, like a speed hump, there's a process to have to go through, and that's in the minutes. So the resident expresses interest to have the speed hump installed on their street, they're to contact Public Works to obtain an application form and traffic coming information package. Resident reviews, fill out the application form, including community petition, so they're going through the community, getting, getting signatures. They submit that to Public Works. The next step is Public Works conducts a review of the application based on installation criteria, as well as using professional judgment, to determine if the application is approved or denied. And then Public Works, based on the available devices, will work to install the speed humps. So there's a process in place now for that. I understand from reading through the minutes that it takes two weeks to have the speed bumps installed, so they're looking to pause the program, and then the department's responsible to re, wants to remain. Department is responsible for remains at a reasonable number. So I guess a couple of questions I have. One, what's a reasonable number? If the city continues to expand and you have new subdivisions opening up, so we have now, the city is continuing to expand, so what's that reasonable number we're looking at? Number two, what is the reason, what is the reason of the speed hump if the city continues to grow? So how long is the pause going to be for, is the second question? It's on a pause. And my third thing is even, so we have a process, and now we want to have people reapply after two years. So you have residents doing basically what I consider our work. They're going to the other residents, they're knocking the doors, they're signing petition. We have staff, well, do the inspection, say yes, it can go here, no, it can't go here. That's done, and then we're going to go back in two years and ask and do the process over again. I have a problem with the two years. I think, to me, you know, if kids in the street and you're doing it for a safety issue and we've inspected and says yes, it should be one here, to me, it's at least four years before you have to do another review. I can understand a review. Communities change, demographics move around. Usually, we would get the calls, but if that's the route they want to go, I, two years, I think is way too short, and to me, I'm thinking of minimum four. And I, you know, I'd be curious of the pause, how long that pause is going to be, and what's, what are they considering a reasonable number? I don't know, not sure how you come to a reasonable number, like I say, if the city continues to grow and you have communities that are looking to, if the safety issue, they're looking to have a device put in. It sounds to me like we paused and said we're going to say no. So correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you for that, Council Bernard. Before, I'm going to pass, I'm going to pass a good part of your questions on to the, to the manager, Scott Adams, but just, you know, the committee, you know, when we met, I think I may have even asked the question at one point, you know, about speed bumps, i.e. the policy, you know, what have you. So that, that got it on the agenda at the last committee meeting, to which there was discussion, to which the manager come back with, you know, with some suggestions. There was some further discussion at the committee level, and I suspect there'll be, this will go back, and there'll be other, further questions around, around this. But as to your questions on the, the reasonable number and pause, and, you know, the two-year thing, you know, you may have, you know, you may have a valid point there. I'll ask Scott, Scott Adams, our, yeah, our manager, to speak to your concerns. Council Bernard, questions? Thank you.
Your worship, so I guess for the first part of the pause, so it's not really a pause in the program, it's a pause in adding any more speed humps. So right now, we have about seventy-five speed humps out in the city, deployed at various areas. In the most, past few years, if I can recall correctly, I think we've only done...
Expansion program paused.
Corrected to add more speed humps.
Say that. It just says expansion program is paused.
Okay, so then that, that needs to be reflected and changed. It was the expansion or adding more speed humps, because what, right now, I think, if I remember correctly, the last story we did was about two years ago, and it was only for ten, and I think we had just placed the last one out, if I'm not mistaken. And so we assumed if, once we do bring in a reset, or, you know, once we do the, every so many years it expires, and that speed hump doesn't go back out until another application comes in, we feel like there will be, some of those speed humps, we won't receive an application back for, so they'll go back in the rotation. So we wanted to pause buying any more until we saw how that reset is going to play out over the next couple of years. If we're flooded with requests, then of course, we can buy more, but we didn't want to go out and buy a whole bunch more and have a whole bunch in stock that we don't need if we're moving them around. And the requests are due kind of a reset every so many years, is, is like you said, demographics and neighborhood changes. You get new people in the neighborhood who will call us and hate the sound of them. Some people like them, some people hate them. It's, and that's why it's community-driven. What's not a city-driven initiative is we want the community, everyone, to be aware that it could be loud, could be noisy, could cause you issues and complaints and such. We want everyone to be in support of it before we go out and place it. And again, what happens over time, over a few years, neighborhoods change, people change in the neighborhood, and we start getting complaints on that. So really, that's why we made the recommendations. So we, the next step is to write the changes into the policy, take it back, take it back to committee one more time for review, so we can have that discussion at the next committee meeting, of what that reset date would be, whether it's two years, four years, or, or five years, whatever, we can have that discussion.
Okay. So that, so that will go back.
We need to go in order of those that were needing to speak next, and I believe Mitchell Twill, Council Twill.
I'll ask him one question.
Okay.
So, it sounds like what you're saying is, this is not, this is, this hasn't been agreed upon yet, this is just a starting point. You go back to the committee, so the two years is not ironclad, it could, it could go to four years, because I think two years is way too short to put in a new speed bump and then go back and ask them for the whole process again.
Again, yeah, we have, we have to bring the redrafted version of the policy back to committee to, for the, let them see the final wording of what we're putting in place in the policy as it, as it is, and bring that policy back to council for final approval. So it still can be discussed at that next committee level, or committee meeting, sorry, what that timeframe can be.
Thank you. Council Twill?
Wanted to bring up a couple of points. I did send an email in regarding the state of Maloney Drive, and the, it's, you know, it's in total disrepair, needs to be, that street needs to be pulverized and paved. It's in very dire straits. We have a lot of senior citizens that commute up and down that street, there are no sidewalks, and it's very difficult for them with their walkers and seniors that have mobility issues. The second street, I wanted to bring to your attention, well, there's many streets, but the second is Lower Douglas Street. Again, it's in deplorable state, and I would ask you to have another look at the state of Lower Douglas Street as well. Last month, the council passed a resolution to approve the West Royalty traffic plan. I was opposed to it because I, I didn't feel that Mount Edward Road was getting its much-needed attention. And if you look at Mount Edward Road, as I said before, and I've been, I brought this up the last term as well, residents on the west side, it's completely and totally unsafe. There's no sidewalks, there's no active transportation pathway. That's very difficult. We have residents living on that street, young families trying to get across Mount Edward Road, which, as I stated, it's very busy, it's industrial, it's, it's a lot of truck traffic. Speed goes from forty to fifty kilometers. I mean, there's unbelievable amount of traffic on that, on that, on that road, and yet, can you imagine schoolchildren trying to cross Mount Edward Road to connect to Pine Drive so they can walk off the street to, to Sherwood Elementary School? So, I'm Scott, I want you to keep that, keep that on the radar. I believe that, you know, that's, that's one of the prime candidates for an active transportation pathway, and it's only right because it's, and it's, it's very difficult for people on the west side, and, and the banks itself, some of those banks, you know, they're, they're very, they're very soft, and if a car goes over in one of those banks, like they have in the past, it's, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be very tragic. So please keep that on your radar. We need to move in that direction. You did say, I think, in one of your remarks, about a plan for Mount Edward Road, but to my mind, that's one of the indispensable prerequisites to making that road safe in terms of pedestrian, cycling, and, and people with mobility issues on that particular site, and it's going to only get busier with all the development that's taking place on, all in through there, behind the Charlestown Mall, further down, you know, land that's owned by Board of Governors, the St. Duncens, and them selling them properties to, or selling their properties where multi-units are being constructed. So the traffic's only going to increase. Please, Scott, keep that on your radar. Thank you.
Through the chair? Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Twill, for reiterating those, those concerns that, you know, you've shared too in the past, and I just ask Scott to make a pass, pass comment on Councilor Twill's, I guess, broad question or, or comment. Thank you.
And we have a question from Councilor Duran.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Yankoff. I've got a couple of questions. I just want to say thank you, Scott, for scaling... you, Scott, for scaling back the AT, Activation Transportation Plans in our area. You know, the residents were, were very upset, you know, thinking that this was going to go on the front lawn. And, and thank you for having the experience to hold this project back. And, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of people happy about that. Thank you. And the only other two questions here I have is, again, I've been asked for a couple of months, that left turn lane leaving Montgomery in front of the Towers Road. I went down there yesterday, and it's still, it's very dangerous because you don't know who's coming where. So, if you could look at that. And the last thing is, is a silly question, but it, you know, it was brought to my attention by a, a longtime resident of Sherwood. And he asked, well, how come we don't get flowers? And I said, well, we do, we do get some, you know, up by the, but he said, some wards, you know, I see them hanging from poles and around town and different things. And what I'm asking for is, is the same as Christmas decorations. We may as well start it early, that, that, you know, each ward gets allotted a certain price for flowers or, or Christmas decorations. And then that way, everybody would be on a level playing field. So, the residents that are paying taxes in Sherwood don't say, well, of course, I, I went to the hospital, I've seen a lot of flowers out there, how come we don't get them, right? So, it's just like equal services for equal taxpayers, and, and take your budget and cut it in 10. And, you know, if we get a few flowers in Maple Avenue, that would be great. So, I, I told him I'd ask the question, and I hope that you'd put it in for budget consultation for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jaron, for that question. And I'll ask manager Scott Adams to, to reply to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to echo upon something that I didn't think we'd be bringing up in June, the Christmas decorations, where some wards do have more than others. And with Ward Eight and Ward Seven, two of the major hubs coming into the city, there's, I'm going to say, zero decorations hanging as people come into the city from that end. So, I would just like to see more distribution over to our end of the city as well for the Christmas decorations. My initial question, reading through the package, I see that money has been allocated for four more streets for sure. And you're looking for possibility of $700,000 more dollars for another list of streets that are here. And with that list, I know you had stated that it's going through, and my apologies, I lost it, but through a previous list of assess, on the street assessment. What year was that assessment done? And I see on the list, there is a street in Highfield that is on the potential list to be done, which was, that subdivision was built in the late 70s. There's no base, and our streets are being torn up very heavily with the construction of a new subdivision, where all these heavy trucks carrying trusses, concrete, and everything are coming through. Streets are getting ripped up. So, it doesn't make sense to me to come in, put a new street down that's going to be destroyed, because the province is not ready to build another access to this subdivision for three to five years. So, and this, the street that's on the list was only done about five years ago. So, my main question is, when, what is this assessment based on, and how long ago was that assessment done?
Thank you, Counselor McKinnon, for that, for that question. I'll defer that to the manager, Scott Adams. Thank you.
Your worship, so the assessments are done every spring, start of the year, and then we develop our list for resurfacing based on that. So, every spring, we reevaluate the streets of the, the city. We have a staff that does that. And then that's how we develop our list. They all get ranked first, first. And then we just go down a list, knowing how much roughly each segment's going to cost us. And then that's how we develop our list based on the capital budget.
Thank you. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to make this quick. I guess I just have a general comment about, I guess, a general comment to make first. We're looking at a lot of potential projects coming up here with density, with buildings coming along. We're looking at, the need for traffic is going to come up as a, as a major concern with a lot of these projects. We, we're looking at, I, I think what, when we're, we're looking at all these projects, I think we have to continue to look through that active transportation lens and figure out how we are going to make that work going forward. We're looking at the environment and sustainability coming in with a pilot project for e-bikes that's, that's out there that is coming around. So, if we're going to be going down that road, we should be looking at increasing our infrastructure and, and active transportation. We're looking at, we've got beautiful extremities with our Riverside Drive. We've got parts of Victoria Park. We've got the arterial parts of Cheryl Town nicely surrounded. We just don't have any veins going through that body to keep the blood flowing, I guess, if you will. So, as we're going forth, I guess that's kind of my general comment, is I, I want us to be fully cognizant of our need for infrastructure focus as we're going forth. And a lot of this stuff that is getting addressed can be addressed, I think, through active transportation. Some of our traffic calming measures, we're talking about speed bumps here tonight. Active transportation can address some of that stuff, too. There are ways to do that as well, too. So, I think if we're looking at that kind of, you know, we've got an inter-jurisdictional committee that's being talked about, be informed on active transportation, right? So, I think we have to keep that discussion going as we're, we're moving forward here. And I think it can address a lot of the issues that we're talking about, the fears that we're actually looking at here with the developments that are coming along, because we do need that development. And hand in hand with that, we have to be focusing on, on the active transportation side. I do have one question about, I do know our policy, so that was kind of my comment. But I have a questions for you, Scott, through the chair, Chair McAleer, if, if it's okay. I know our road policy is worst comes first. What's our policy on sidewalks? And I don't, I don't know what that is. I've just seen some sidewalks have just appeared, and I don't know why they're appearing, or why they're being redone, or why are they being refitted, or, you know, why, how do we make a decision whether we add a sidewalk or remove a sidewalk, or, because I, I do know in my area, there are some requests to remove sidewalks. And I don't quite know how that all works. So, maybe if you could just enlighten us a little bit about that, that would be great.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for that. And I think we were talking earlier today on, on the sidewalk thing, and you had, you, you think you would also ask, or not ask, but, you know, made the comment. We were just talking about, in some streets, you know, the reason for two sidewalks, you know. Anyway, there, but your, your question in general, I'll, again, pass, pass to manager Scott Adams. Thank you.
So, your worship, I guess there's kind of two parts to that question. And the first one is, coming this fall, we intend to formalize our policy and written document exactly what street should get one or two sidewalks. That's one thing that's been, we haven't have a formal policy. We have followed past practices. But we will be formalizing that and bringing that forward this fall, along with an update to the Five-Year Master Replacement Sidewalk and Multi-Use Pathway Plan. So, that's, or, sorry, I shouldn't say replacement, that's new. So, any streets that don't have sidewalks or multi-use pathways now, will be, we have a five-year plan. I think we're in year two of it right now. And so, we need to update that to keep it at five years. So, those two things will be coming forward in September, October of this year, just ahead of budget season, so that it's a good time to be thinking about those things. But how we typically look at these things, so repair and maintenance, there's kind of two things that happen. One is, we have two individuals who go around, inspect every sidewalk. They walk every sidewalk in the city in the spring. They have a document book, and, and they rate each straight, each section of sidewalk. They're looking for cracks, they're looking for trip hazards, drops, broken concrete, all that good stuff. Then all that gets put in a large schedule, and gets prioritized in terms of big trip hazards are priority one, large broken segments, priority one. And then they get all rearranged like that. So, that's how we do our regular maintenance program. Long stretches that are replaced, if we're planning on resurfacing a road or doing some major roadwork, we will typically replace, if it's in rough shape, the entire section will replace the whole thing while we're there. Because when you replace sidewalk, you damage the asphalt. So, we'd rather do sidewalk replacement while we're doing the asphalt, so everything looks nice and clean at the end of the day. There are some times we'll replace long segments if it's really damaged before, ahead of time before street resurfacing. But typically, we try to avoid that just so that we don't have that asphalt cut of the road.
Thank you for that. Now, Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. No, I'm glad that somebody brought up the speed bumps, because a resident in my ward watched the public works last week, and she phoned me all panicking, wondering if she would ever, if she's going to end up losing her speed hump, bump, whatever you want to call it. And I said, well, no, but they're looking at going at a two-year pause, or, or an application. But once, I always thought, once they had it, unless the residents didn't want it anymore, it went back automatically, Scott, on certain streets. Is that true or false? Well, thank you, Chair. Oh, through the chair, sorry.
Yeah, I'll pass that to, on to Scott. I know at the committee level, there was the grandfather word was, was, was talked about, or you. So, Scott, maybe you can clarify that for Counselor Ramsey. Thank you.
Your worship, so, yes, in, up to today, yes, if there's an application in, and it was approved for that location, then yes, it would continuously go back to the same spot. And that's why we're kind of looking forward to have a kind of expiration date on that. Because again, demographics and neighborhood change, traffic patterns are changing in the neighborhoods, too. And that might, may not, that may not be the best suited location anymore. Or we've done a lot of, like I take Harley Street, for instance, maybe we had a speed hump on there before, but now we did what we call a chicane on Harley Street. While that takes place of the speed hump, and it's controlling traffic very, very well. So, that's why we want to have that break, because we don't want people calling us, well, we need a speed hump back. Well, you got to, there's a process, or it doesn't need to go back there anymore. So, we need to, we want to have that mechanism to get the community back and behind that speed hump again, again, because it'll then avoid the confusion with the residents as well.
Yeah, and that's our, like, that's an easy sell for the, for, you know, for the department. But for one, for certain residents that are going to be on that street forever, kids and all that stuff, and you keep saying, you know, we're, we might say we'll put something else there. Like, like, they look forward to that speed bump, because, well, the street I'm talking about is Skyview. Everybody's using that as a shortcut to get down north of the road and get on Atlantic Drive now, because they don't want to wait in the traffic, right? And she just panics every year, because, you know, like, the kids can't even walk across the street to, where the bus picked them up, because cars are passing each other every time on that line. So, you know, that's what I'm just saying. So, we'll have to be careful of who we say no to, I guess. That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to, just let Counsel Beck know, because he brought up the question there. But with the bike lanes and active transportation, Bike Friendly Cheryl Town and Cyclone P E I have worked together, put a master plan together, have dropped that off to, to us. You're aware of that. So, that's a guide that I'm assuming public works and practice record use. So, I didn't know whether you knew that or not. You can get a copy of it and see what all the veins, where they're going. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if that's all the questions we have, we have two resolutions. So, resolution number one.
Deputy Mayor, moved by Counselor Twill and seconded by Counselor McAleer, be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for Towers Road Multi-Use Pathway, the low submission of Duffy's Construction in the amount of $659,230 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Twill?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Public Works Committee for bringing this forward. Just to give you a little history, three to four years ago, I held a community meeting at the Maple Room. Approximately 60 people or more attended. Counselor Jaron was there, along with the Chief of Police. And year after year, you know, we kept lobbying. Just recently, last couple of years, City of Cheryl Town has received approximately 75 emails. It's, it's very dangerous on this particular road. There's a lot of traffic on this road. And this pathway will be much welcome for the folks that live in this part of Sherwood. I want to thank Counselor Jaron. I want to thank Counselor McKinnon. You and I were to have a look at it as well. This will probably be one of the most busiest active for transportation pathways in the city of Cheryl Town. I can pretty well guarantee that. So, I want to thank everyone for supporting this at capital budget time when, when it was brought forward. I want to thank you, Scott, for, for the work that you've done. Certainly looking forward to having this there. And I know we're seniors and people with mobility issues, and, and we have students that attend U P E I that walk down this street, connect to the rails of trails, and then go to the university. So, this is, this is a great project. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Questions called.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Eight, zero. Next, we will go on to Public Works Committee Number Two Resolution.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor McAleer, be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for two municipal sidewalk tractors with attachments, the low submission of Saunders Equipment Limited in the amount of $398,910 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Eight, zero. Thank you. We can now move on to Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee Report. Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Economic Tourism and Cultural Development met on June 20th, and the minutes are included in your package. The Arts Advisory Board met on June 12th, and the minutes are also included in your package. And there's no resolutions for consideration. I'd just like to offer a few department highlights. The department is coming through a very busy time of events and projects. This year's Canada Day celebrations was a huge success with a spectacular fireworks show on the Cheryl Town waterfront, and being included as part of the national broadcast on CBC and Radio Canada. There were over 30,000 people that took part in the celebrations. And thanks to all the city departments for their joint efforts in making this event a huge success. We welcomed the Halifax Wanderers and Germany's Holstein Keel U23 teams for an international soccer match last week. 2,500 people took, took in the match, which included a beautiful evening of play, photos, autographs, and social interactions. The Canadian Forces Snowbirds dazzled approximately 20,000 spectators on the shores of the Cheryl Town Harbor yesterday. Special thanks go out to the Cheryl Town Fire Department, Cheryl Town City Police Services, Cheryl Town Yacht Club, R C M P, H M C S Queen Charlotte, and the Canadian Coast Guard for their assistance in securing the waterfront to allow this show to take place. This is the final week to take in the Canada Tree 2.0 exhibit at Confederation Landing. If you've not yet seen this amazing artistic creation, be sure to stop down before July 16th. And nominations are now open for Make Our Hometown Beautiful and Citizen Recognition Awards. Residents are encouraged to nominate someone or self-nominate. And council members are also encouraged to nominate residents for both. also encouraged to nominate residents for both. Details can be found on the city's website, with awards to be handed out during Natal Day Weekend Celebration, August 3rd to the 6th. So that's the report, and if there's any questions, I'll try to answer or hand them off to Manager Wayne Long.
Thank you Council McKinnon for your report. Mitchell, Council Twill, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. As a member of the committee, back in May, at the monthly meeting, I brought up about the, the event grounds down in the eastern part of the city. As we know, the event grounds was constructed to host events. So if you look at what's transpired over the last number of years, nothing really happens down on that facility. There might be the, you know, Shellfish Festival, which is hosted in the parking lot, and a couple of other events, but nothing where there's any real consistency or, or anything that's really taking place where the residents can look forward to from, you know, from a summertime perspective. I believe the time has come that the city of Charlestown form a partnership with C A D C, Parks and Recreation, to have that facility there for, for artists and musicians, entertainers. When it comes to outdoor venues, there isn't, there isn't one here in the city of Charlestown that the artists and musicians can call truly their own. For example, there's nowhere for them to play, and that's why this facility was constructed to begin with. Millions and millions of dollars have been spent on that facility, and yet it's just sitting there dormant and not being utilized. I believe it's time, the time has come for the city, economic development, tourism and events, maybe to sit down with Parks and Rec. Wayne, you and I have discussions informally over this, over the last number of months. Team up maybe with Parks and Recreation Manager Frank Quinn, C A D C, we've, I've talked to them, just to gauge their interest. They're very, very supportive, and would like to see something happening on that site. And I think it's a real shame that that site is sitting there, not being utilized. It's underutilized. To my mind, that's a real tragedy. So why not have that going six and seven days a week, and let our musicians and artists get down there and have an opportunity to have a venue, like I said earlier, a facility that they could call truly their own, they can book it six, seven nights a week, and we can have some entertainment, and people in the city can get down and enjoy it. Councilor Dran, you talked about, you brought this up as well, a couple of months ago. We don't have a facility of that magnitude in our city. It's there, that's why it was built, and I don't know why we're not utilizing it. So I'll put this out to the C A O, I'd be willing to sit down with, you know, our manager of Economic Development and Tourism, manager of Parks and Recreation, see what, what takes place with the pavilion. Once again, that's a, that's a, that's a venue that's being underutilized. And the Victoria Park Master Plan plays a major role in that, that what can go there, what can't go there, what type of entertainment can be hosted there, and what type of entertainment cannot be. So I bring it up again, I'm serious about it, and I think we need to come up with a plan of action. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Council Twill. Councilor Beck?
Just a quick question, through the, through the Chair. I'm glad to see the cultural policies being looked at. 2006 is a little outdated, I think we've, fair, safe to say that a fair amount has changed in Charlestown over the last 17 years. Just a question, I know one of the things we have talked about is creating a diversity, equity, inclusion framework, which, which did get deferred this year under the strategic priorities, but does that, could this be part of that frame, potential framework down the road, Mr. Chair, or through to Wayne, if you prefer to pass it off to Wayne? I'm just wondering how those two might potentially be blended if a point in time comes down in the future where our D E I framework does get established within the city. I'm just wondering how those two might line up, one with the other. Thank you.
Thank you Council Beck for your question, and I will defer that question to the Manager Wayne Long.
Through the Chair, thank you for your question, Councilor Beck. I would say that there's some overlay in terms of synergies. This particular policy is very much authentic when it comes to cultural itself, so the Arts Advisory Board will be involved in the process in terms of giving directive on that, and as well, it will come back to council as a whole. So the diversity in this particular policy is, is more of growing the city's arts and cultural file versus inclusivity and diversity. That conversation could have some overlay, but it's not necessarily directly related to the discussion where this particular policy is presented, which we're referring to tonight.
I guess what kind of prompted my, when I was looking at the appendix under the key findings, it was using words like social, cultural, cultural vision, diverse community members, and, and that sort of word. So I was looking, when I was looking at this, it seemed to me that it was speaking very much to that inclusionary side, and I guess that's just why I was wondering that this could be, just think about that, I guess, in terms of as we're moving forward, this might be something that could be part, I guess I'm trying to think, it could be part of our framework if we move forward with it, because it seems to be speaking to a lot of that inclusiveness definition, the culture, the cultural vision, diverse community members, that sort of thing. Maybe just keep that in mind, that that's maybe part of a potential framework going down the road.
Council McKinnon?
Sorry, I was just responding.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there was a question.
Okay, all right. So if, if, if Wayne wants to respond to that, go ahead.
Sure. Thank, thank you very much, Councilor Beck, and we will take that information back for sure to, to think through that a little bit more. You know, definitely, as I indicated, there would be some synergies, but there is some distinction in terms of arts and culture, and then how inclusivity plays in that. There'd be a number of inclusive communities participate in that, but I wouldn't want to be misleading in terms of how it's inclusive of the city from an H R perspective or other social interactions. So there's definitely interaction, and we're at the point in time where we, we haven't moved down the road that far yet, we're in the, in the early stages, so we'll certainly bring that back for further discussion.
And Council Matar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to further comment on Council Twill's comments about the event grounds, and looking at that maybe from the perspective of the public not fully understanding how a facility like that could be utilized, understanding that local talent would use it on a regular basis, but bringing in attractions, and, you know, I think about just recently, there was a concert at the Civic Center, and, you know, maybe there's criteria around some acts that don't want to come and play outdoors, maybe outdoors adds a whole other dynamic to, as opposed to an indoor thing, obviously capacity being another. So I think from a public perception perspective, Mr. Chair, and, you know, and possibly to the manager here, is, you know, could we get a good understanding of the different things and why, you know, why there hasn't been anything? I don't feel like there's been anything there in a number of years as well. I've been to some events there, and I thought they were wonderful. I do have people ask me too, you know, why, why that is not utilized more? And maybe there's a valid reason, I think we just don't fully understand, maybe as a council, and maybe the public doesn't understand. So maybe you could take two minutes just to give us a high-level overview of what would attract somebody there versus the Civic Center or Somerside, a larger venue, Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you for any questions, Council Matar. One thing we do for local artists, we do have the pavilion down on the waterfront, which when you're down there walking around, you'd never see that one being used. I think that should be an opportunity for local artists to use as well. But for the event grounds, I will hand that over to Mr. Long.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through the Chair, Council Matar, good, good question. There's a number of things to consider here. One of the, the largest challenges with the event grounds is it's, it's not necessarily scalable in terms of dealing with a large event to a smaller event, and the impacts that has on the experience, not only for the organizer, but for the patron as a whole. It's also important to, to understand that the Charlestown Event Grounds is managed by East Link Center, Charlestown. The Charlestown Area Development Corporation has engaged East Link Center, they have a long-term agreement with respect to managing that site and being responsible for marketing and going to market with that particular site. There's also some challenges around the long-term opportunities at the site. We're about to embark on a new public street going through the event grounds, there's some work going to be done there through the city's Public Works Department, perhaps in conjunction with the province. I can't speak in depth about that, because I don't have all of the background. I do know that C A D C has recently brought stakeholders together to talk about what the site might look like in the future years, and how that may be utilized in terms of its impact, not only as an event ground, but can be used as a green space or a public space when the, the site is not being used for events. So there's a number of things to consider there. There's, there's obviously a, a great amount of power, we've had major concerts there in the past, Shania Twain is a good example of that, but in terms of the site being scalable from larger events to smaller events, it's very challenging for a smaller event to go to a large site, get easily lost, it's, it's too expensive at times, sometimes with respect to the infrastructure that has to be brought in. So there's a number of things that need to be considered, and, you know, perhaps there's a number of departments meet with C A D C and the East Link Center to talk about the future of that site and how we can best work together.
Thank you. Council Twill?
Yeah, just to follow up on what Wayne brought up, Wayne brings up some excellent points, but the thing to keep in mind is that all of the utilities are there, you know, electricity, water and sewer, all that is all there to, to be tapped into and to be utilized. Like I said, millions and millions of dollars have been spent there. I met with Aaron Hanson from C A D C, we did a couple of walkthroughs on that particular site, and even with the road going in, that doesn't prohibit any type of concerts or any type of local artists having the opportunity to perform down there. And I, and I, I think one of the challenges is some type of staging. You know, if we can just get one event going, just, just light a spark and get one event going, and, and open up to, or open that up to our local artists, then, then, you know, I think good things will happen, and there'll be more, more, more entertainers, artists, regardless of, you know, whatever your musical preference is, will have that opportunity to, to get down there and play. And I know a lot of people from Charlestown and, and neighboring communities would welcome that opportunity, get down there and watch some good entertainment, so, watch some of our local artists. Because, you know, as you pointed out Wayne, we got, you know, it's mandated with the Charlestown Civic Center, C A D C's a majority owner of that facility, we're a minority owner, but nothing's happening, and, and there's no coordination. I want to thank Council Matar for bringing that up as well. So, you know, somewhere along the line, someone's got to light a spark and get this thing going.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to our final report for this evening, and that's Environment and Sustainability Committee, and that's Council Bernard.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. It's nine o'clock, we'll try and get through this as quickly as we can. Environment Sustainability met June 21st. There is a lot of good information in the minutes on programs staff have been working on, such as the flood rebate program, the Better Homes Neighborhood Program, the transit ridership, all that's in your package, so I'll do my best to answer those questions. Just a couple of quick highlights though, I think are interesting. One is the Environment Sustainability, in partnership with Public Works, recently installed a tree cell on the corner of Prince and Fitzroy Streets, excuse me. Tree cells create underground infrastructure support, a healthy root system, allowing paving and driving to happen over the roots, while also allowing the trees in our downtown to live long life. Many trees in urban areas decline or are lost while they're young due to a root compact and other impacts on the tree. This technology is being used in cities around the world to ensure large canopy trees survive for generations and provide their many benefits to people and the environment. So we'll see how that pile project works, but it sounds like it's worked well in, in other jurisdictions. The other highlight I want to mention was the private stump rebate program. The criteria has been established, as Council recalls, we passed 250,000 in the budget to help residents with some relief with larger stump removal costs on private property. We have not heard back from the province yet on matching funds. It is now July, and we would like to get started on this program, but we'll need Council approval to move forward. So if we don't receive matching funds before our next council meeting, then we'll bring a resolution forward to see if Council wants to use the funds that we put in the budget. So other than that, if there's any questions. The ridership is, is in there also, it's, it's up 49% year over year, so I believe it was 102,000 compared to 68,000. So like I said, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you Council Bernard. Amy, so many, so many. Amy Mike Son, Mercy. Thank you Council Bernard. We'll open it up to folks if they have any questions, and I believe Council Twill had his mic on first.
Just on the, on the, some private property, you know what, if you don't hear from the province in the next, say, week, let's just go ahead and put the necessary funds in place. Like I said, it's now July, and these stumps have been in private property for long enough. Let's, let's go in and remove these big trumps, stumps, I don't care what size they are, whatever cost, let's just go in and do it, because it's, it's been a real burden on, on, on the homeowners, and it's impossible for them to incur that type of expenditure. So I just want you to know, I'm full support, let's move forward.
Okay. No, thank you Council Twill, and it's the criteria, the criteria is just in the package, and, but when we put that in the budget, we did say, you know, contingent on matching dollars from the province. So I just wanted to follow proper process, I guess, and if we don't get word, we'll bring it back to council, see if they want to spend the dollars we put in the budget. Thank you.
Council Matar?
Thank you, Your Worship. Council Bernard, maybe my comment would have been best suited for fire and safety and policing services, but with the expansion of the various routes, you know, outside of the main corridors and kind of down some side street stuff, I do get quite a bit in, in my area particularly regarding the excessive speed of the buses in which they travel. Now, I have to assume they're trying to adhere to a schedule and get from point A to B to see them, you know, very quickly, but interestingly enough, I had witnessed it myself, and I was quite surprised. Now, I don't know if it's just optically looks like these buses are traveling really fast because they're big and the way they move, but, you know, I do know that it is a concern. I'm sure it's not the first time it's been raised, and again, I'm not directing it so much towards your committee, but, you know, probably more of a policing safety situation, but, and maybe you can enlighten me on some, you know, maybe this is something that has been addressed and something that is known across the city, but it seems to be very prevalent with the speed of the buses in which they are, you know, going around Charlestown, and I, and I observe it quite often, because I'm actually fascinated, but I'm just surprised how, how quick they are buzzing around the town, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
No, thank you, Council Matar. We'll certainly bring it back to our committee, we have staff that are dealing with T3 all the time, so we'll bring those concerns back. To be honest with you, I have heard that before too, and you're probably, you're probably right, they're probably trying to adhere to their schedule, but I mean, safety comes first, so we will have staff talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you, and Council Beck?
Just a quick comment. It struck me when I was reading the feedback, looks like Alistair Ozon's a bit of a rock star down there on this program with the rebate. Things like Alistair was very responsive. Alistair was very responsive to our calls and emails. Mr. Ozon, very easy to deal with, knowledgeable staff. First and foremost, he was extremely helpful and kind, nice guy. It was very easy, and the staff is very helpful, so shout out Alistair Ozon for doing his work on that file, well done.
Well, thank you Council Beck, we did mention that at, at our committee meeting, but it is, it is nice to see the public comment and honor staff like that, so thank you very much for that.
Any other questions? Any other questions for the Chair? If not, any new business? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Council Dran, seconded by Council Matart. Good night, everybody.